This is the meeting of the Gettysburg Borough Planning Commission for the month of September. My name is Charles Strauss. I'm the Chair, currently the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Let me begin by thanking all of you for being here tonight, also to community media for recording our meeting, and to the residents who have generously contributed to broadcasting and recording these meetings while the Borough Planning Commission facilitates the comprehensive rezoning of our borough ordinance related to zoning. Can everyone hear me? Okay. I also would like to introduce those of us who are up here, including John Whitmore, our Planning Director, Sarah Kipp, who's on the phone. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, welcome, Sarah. Adam Boyer, who is our Commission Solicitor, John Rice, a member of the Planning Commission, Marty Jolyn, a member of the Planning Commission, Troy Truax, a consultant from Michael Baker International, and of course Chad Claybaugh, our Borough Engineer. Three final notes of introduction. The Borough of Gettysburg convened a meeting around, I'm sorry, convened a committee around March 2023 in conjunction with Michael Baker International to work on a comprehensive rezoning proposal. And two members of the Planning Commission, Sarah Kipp and Nick Redman, who's unfortunately not able to be here, but we are now joined by Jenny Dumont, who is the alternate member of our Planning Commission. Nick and Sarah served on that committee, and for many months, we were able as a Planning Commission to receive some of the information that was being discussed at those ad hoc committees as a Planning Commission at our regularly scheduled business meetings. In the middle of this process, the Borough had a staff change in the role of Planning Director, and Carly Marshall moved on to another opportunity, and we welcomed John Whitmore in this role. Both Ms. Marshall and Mr. Whitmore have provided expert and appreciated guidance to this commission. So that was my first note of introduction. Second, in May 2024, the Planning Commission received a completed draft of the proposed new zoning ordinance, and we established a plan to review this document, make revisions where appropriate, and work toward making a formal recommendation of a revised draft to the Gettysburg Borough Council, which is the body with the authority to approve all ordinances. We conducted this deliberation at the June, July, and August regular business meetings and continue that work today and in upcoming meetings. All minutes of those meetings are posted online. Right now, there is a redlined version of this work as of August 21st, 2024, on the Borough website, and it includes deliberation on Part One, General Zoning Provisions, Part Two, Zoning Districts, Part Three, Zoning Uses, and Part Five, Definitions. We also discussed the zoning map, which is Exhibit A in the draft ordinance. Please note that we did leave unfinished business in almost all of these parts, and the Planning Commission intends to revisit items, including several provisions regarding the purpose statement in Part One, districts, uses, and standards in Parts Two and Three, and also the zoning map. And we have yet to tackle Part Four, Supplemental Regulations. Finally, three. This is a complex task, as anyone following this knows well. Thank you to those who have offered their questions, concerns, and also suggestions. Thank you to John Whitmore for taking the abundance of feedback and putting it into a form that the Planning Commission can understand. Many times, the conversations about this draft ordinance and revisions to it require a decision that weighs competing goods, and these can be challenging conversations. But we remain committed to providing a recommendation that is smart, responsive to the community, and appropriate. Appropriate that is related to the regional comprehensive plan, good practices for planning and zoning, as shared by Planning Director Whitmore, Borough Engineer Chad Claybaugh, and Commission Solicitor Adam Boyer, and our own individual research, as well as the built environment and zoning uses that we all experience as we live and work and enjoy our borough. So, I now ask that we review and approve tonight's agenda. We will begin by accepting our minutes. There will be time for public comment. Our only item of business for tonight is rezoning. We will begin by Troy Truax of Michael Baker International, and then John Whitmore will guide us through several items of zoning business. Within these items, which are two to six on your agenda, my hope is that we will make progress on building consensus on remaining items ahead of us, perhaps specifically the revitalization district, the zoning map, and land uses, specifically in the R2 district, and the other items that... We will not achieve all of these tasks this evening, but we will prioritize hearing public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting and allowing questions and answers of Troy Truax. It has been our practice to encourage back and forth between the public and the Commission at our meetings. Tonight, if you could hold off on your questions until Mr. Truax or John Whitmore have completed their remarks, and then we will facilitate questions within a reasonable time limit. Thank you for enduring me reading from prepared remarks. Just wanted to get things... Before we start, what is a little bit of an irregular kind of meeting, given that we are here in the Rec Park, Sterner Building, and not in our normal place? So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda for September 16th.
I think you have to turn that up.
I'll move to approve the agenda for September 16th.
Second.
So Marty moved and John seconded. Please, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes four to zero. Now we have this opportunity for public comment on any item on our agenda which includes anything related to this rezoning effort. Over there?
Yeah, minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the August 19th, 2024, meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of August 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Marty moved and John seconded. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Okay, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and that motion passes four to zero. Now it's an opportunity for public comment. Please take the podium to my right, and you're welcome to speak on anything related to rezoning. Yes?
Good evening. I'm Carl Peterszak. I'm the President of Destination Gettysburg. So I'm here to speak from that standpoint. And generally, what I'd like to ask this group is, as you consider rezoning, especially in the historic parts of the borough, you know, promoting this destination, one of the things we really can brag about for Gettysburg is the authenticity of this town. And so many of our visitors, just like our residents, enjoy coming here and seeing, you know, a lot of what looks the same as it did in 1863, in a good way. Not that things haven't progressed and improved since then. So, just advising and asking for caution in any way that further development that might change the nature or the character of this historic town, you know, buildings that are much taller than current structures or are much more modern compared to what you see in the borough, I think could really endanger just the authentic nature of this town. And once we go down that path, it's really hard to turn that back around once we get started. So just asking for caution as you guys think of all these, the new ordinances.
Thank you.
I'm Sue Cipperly, and I live on Stratton Street in Gettysburg. And I gave the Commission some detailed comments on mainly the northeast quadrant of the borough, which is where I live, but also there's a proposed zoning change for Carlisle Street between Water Street and Lincoln Avenue. Currently, it's residential office, which allows student housing, which is mostly owned by the college, funeral home, offices, academic department, facilities, restaurants, bed and breakfast, and others like hotels. These are uses that currently exist or have in the past. They can benefit the adjoining neighborhoods and provide the owners with more options. The proposed ordinance takes away office residential and makes the whole area moderate density residential, or R2. The current OR uses are not suitable for R2, but it seems like many of them were merged into R2, which will apply throughout the borough. Specifically, it would reinstate bed and breakfast, which the Borough Council just deleted from R2 and other zones in October 2021. The rezoning should follow that recent ordinance, which took at least two years to devise throughout the borough. Two uses that exist on Carlisle but are totally appropriate, sort of next door in the R2, fraternities and sororities, party houses. And who would buy a house next to one? Why should a neighborhood have to put up with it? That's one of the new things in R2. Dwelling, student housing, institutional already exists on Carlisle in the larger structures. No matter how much supervision is supposed to be, it doesn't happen. If you put it in an R2 zone, it competes with other people looking for housing. Community residence and group home, from what I've read, needs a larger structure and more residents allowed than are permitted in R2. A motel in R2? Really? That was one of the new uses. Carlisle Street has always been zoned the same as Baltimore Street, residential office. Now Baltimore Street is designated Historic Corridor Neighborhood Commercial, or NC2. Carlisle Street should be zoned the same as Baltimore Street. Couple other topics, height. Why increase the height in districts such as industrial? Right now it's 48, and the new version would be 60 feet by right. It's not just the revitalization district, but that's another important part of this. One of the uses that I noticed was pawn shop and check cashing establishment, as I looked through the ordinance, which can also be known for predatory lending practices. It's in three zones by right, general, commercial, old town, historic corridor, and two more by special exception, NC1 and NC3. It's really not appropriate for neighborhoods or for Old Town. Make it general, commercial only. How many pawn shops do we need? In general, this ordinance is arduous to use, even for someone like me who did planning for a living. The goals stated in the contract were to make an ordinance that is concise and user-friendly. This one definitely doesn't meet those criteria. It needs a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen and lady, I'm Ed Puhl. I have property at 231 Springs Avenue and 220 Baltimore Street, so I guess I'm doubly affected by the changes. Is there any ordinance? I have a couple observations to make and a couple questions to ask. I realize the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission Act makes it unlawful to discriminate against individuals in groups based on handicap and disability. I noticed that in the proposed zoning, as a matter of right, group homes and community residents are permitted in all residential areas. So I'm assuming that that's because of the Human Relations Act. But my problem with that is there's no definition for what constitutes community residence or group home. I think the devil is always in the details, so I encourage you to consider preparing a definition for what that term means. My other observation, criticism, is, has to do with parking spaces. Under the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance, a parking space is a minimum of nine by 18 feet. Now, handicap space under both the current and proposed ordinance is eight by 20 feet. Under the proposed ordinance, a bona fide street parking space is seven by 20. Meanwhile, the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code calls for parking spaces to be at least nine feet by 18 and a half feet. So I would like you to make consistent dimensions of parking spaces, and I would encourage you to make them more than 18 feet, because anybody who has parked along any of the streets in downtown Gettysburg knows just how tight those spaces are. And in that context, cars in the United States keep getting bigger, and the trend is expected to continue. The average size of a car increased in length by 12% since 2013 and by 17% in width since that same time. So they're definitely getting bigger, heavier, longer. Yet, we have this amazing shrinking parking space, and I would encourage you to make it at least 18 and a half feet pursuant to the Uniform Construction Code. So those are my comments and observations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that comment. Please know that there are two other times during this meeting when you can ask questions or make comment. That would be after our new business in relation to the presentations and comments we'll hear, and then at the very end of the meeting. We have no table old business, so we move directly to our new business, which begins with introductions with Troy Truax regarding the rezoning process, and thank you for being here.
My pleasure. My pleasure, Chairman Strauss. Good evening, everybody. Troy Truax with Michael Baker International. I work up in Harrisburg, PA, live in Carlisle, PA, and I've been working in Gettysburg even before I was with Michael Baker. Steinware Avenue, did a lot of work with folks there from many years ago with Main Street in the borough. So happy to be back to help. As Mr. Strauss had specified, we've worked a number of months, beginning over a year ago, working with an ad hoc committee that Borough Council directed us to work with. And the purpose of that ad hoc committee was to have monthly workshops. Those monthly workshops, we worked through, beginning to end on all parts of the ordinance. It wasn't done in a vacuum. Chad Claybaugh was at those meetings as well, and then John Whitmore, taking over Carly's position, joined us, and we brought him up to speed on the process too. We did have a sizable public meeting at the onset, I believe almost October, a year ago, in this very room. Had quite a few people, and we took a lot of great comment and input on that part. And I think it was also important that Chairman Strauss mentioned that through that process, information was provided to the Planning Commission, so they were kept apprised of how things were progressing and moving along. I'll have to admit, zoning is always an arduous process. It's never easy. I work on these for my 28 years in career, and none of them is a slam dunk. So we appreciate your comments. Your comments are taken seriously. I know even when we started off with the beginning meeting in October, we were deliberate about taking comments. Even individuals came up and said, "Hey, I want to make sure my property is zoned this way or kept this way." So we did our best, and we'll continue to do that, to work with the Planning Commission through council and getting public comment to make those changes. So just, you know, kind of where I stand on this is, you know, all good comments and our great ideas to be incorporated in. And I think Chairman Strauss said it best. We have to compromise. We're never going to have 100% agreement on these issues, if you will, but at some point, the council has to make the final decision on, based upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So with that, I'm happy to answer what questions I can tonight. We're directed by Chairman Strauss on matters. If we don't have a good answer for you, I'll work with John and Chad and others to get information back to the Planning Commission to work through. So just want to be fair to everybody in terms of opportunity to maybe follow up and do some more research if I can't answer your questions specifically, because I don't want to give you bad information either here tonight, so.
Yep, thank you. So my suggestion here, John, is that we go through what you have already laid out as these items, and if you could give a very brief intro to each item, and then we allow for comment on them, and then questions from the public or Planning Commission, well, starting with Planning Commission members of Troy, and then the public.
Certainly. And so let's get John Whitmore. And talked with, I think, most everyone in the room. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the revitalization district first. This has been, between that, this and chickens, I think, has been the big issue that's come up through this planning process. The revitalization district encompasses 19 properties, a total of 8.01 acres. These properties were former ROR, these properties on the eastern side of Carlisle, and OT zone parcels, these right here. Whoops, how'd I go the right way? The ones that are on the west side of Carlisle were formerly OT. All the properties are within the historic district. That's an important clarifying point, because the historic district really provides the borough's architectural design standards. So when we're talking about the, how the buildings look on the outside, the Historic Architectural Review Board really provides that benefit to the borough. We get into it a little bit with zoning, and we'll get into this, I'll explain it a little bit. The purpose of the revitalization district is to promote revitalization of existing structures and development of underutilized or vacant parcels adjacent to the downtown core. Now going back to this map, when you think of these parcels, you have City Mart, Taco Monarcos right there, you have, this is the Gettysburg Station property, so there's vacant. There's the transit centers right there. That's probably the most fulfilled building site optimized in this area. Over on this side, there's a two-story, the rowhouse-style development, owned by college, an empty building owned by the college, and then some other smaller structures. The real difference between the revitalization district and the Old Town district is that we're trying to get these properties to be better optimized, better developed, to be able to facilitate that area between the college and downtown, so you have the continued built form, you still have the density there, and it makes a lot of sense, given the fact that it is right near the core. The OT district, what we're proposing with this draft would have additional architectural reviews that occur at the zoning level as compared to the revitalization zone. So, in that, what that would mean in the reality is that a building that could be built in the revitalization zone could be physically larger. As you can see from this image on the left-hand side of the screen, the built form for the Old Town district, it's what we all know and experience when we're in the downtown around the square right now. That's what we're trying to preserve, that rhythm and harmony of our built blocks in that area. The revitalization district's a little bit different, though, because as I noted, it's, we need to have more development there, or at least what we're doing is we're encouraging development to occur in that zone. The Old Town district itself allows for more residential and commercial uses than what's permitted in the revitalization district. And then the big thing that's come up, the revitalization district does have the extended building height provision. When we're talking about the extended build, extended height building, this is defined in the draft ordinance as a vertically mixed-use building having two or more different uses that is permitted by special exception approval to exceed the maximum permitted height of 48 feet specified in the, it'll be revitalization district, it's typed up, by meeting certain incentive-based criteria set forth in the supplemental use regulations. Those criteria include integrated parking, LED building, transit facilities, bicycle trail infrastructure, green space, and affordable housing. We'll have a discussion to seek consensus from the Commission here shortly to establish if we would, how many of those exemptions should be required for larger building heights. When we're talking about the extended building heights, it's only for four parcels. These are the Gettysburg Station parcels. This is 103 Carlisle, 102 North Stratton, 108 North Stratton, and 101 North Stratton. This codifies the prior zoning hearing board decisions related to building height for this area as provided in the zoning hearing board decision in ZHB-23001. Have copies of that decision available. Basically, the finding from the zoning hearing board back in, when was this? Summer of 2023 was that this project, the Gettysburg Station project, would be allowed to build up to 72 feet, and would be allowed then to incur an additional 12 feet for mechanicals. That's total building height visual obstruction of it. They're permitted to have of 84 feet. That's been established. What we're trying to do with this ordinance is codify what's already in existence for these properties and incentivizing the development that hasn't been totally finalized at this point. They will be coming back before the Historic Architecture Review Board in the near future, and we still haven't gone through all the land development plans. But the goal with this was to get us to a point where we're meeting what's already been established for the built environment in this location. So, at this point, this is, I'm going to ask the Commission, I guess, to either, we have a conversation, and then hopefully some consensus.
Great. Thank you, John. Great. Thank you, John. Can you just remind us what page the incentives are on? Do you have that handy?
I do not have that handy.
I do, but I'm having, I'm having a little. Troy, do you know the page number of the incentives?
Yeah, just give me one second.
So anyone following it can.
It's page 93 and 94.
Thank you. Do you have that memorized?
92 and 93.
Thanks, Jim.
So in the proposed draft, we, staff has recommended just one of the, of any of those exactions to be able to have the increased building height. One of the continual comments that came up was if this were to occur, having more requirements of having additional exactions.
So I'd like to begin, and thank you for that introduction. And of course, this is one of the biggest issues that we've discussed and that the community has brought forward. And so I want to make a comment or a question and then turn it to the Planning Commission members, including Sarah on the phone. Can you still hear us, Sarah? Sarah, can you hear us?
I can, I can hear you. I can hear John the best. The rest of you, not so great.
Okay. So if everyone can make sure their mics are close to their, close to them. So as John described, the existing ordinance permits this additional height in four parcels, which are called the ROR. And what I read this as doing is extending the ROR into a new district called the R or Revitalization District, but not permitting those heights on that side of Carlisle Street. Is that what I heard you say, John?
That, that would be correct, although the ROR District also incorporates SCCAP.
SCAP.
Yeah, SCAP.
Okay. And of course, everyone following this has known that there was a big community discussion back in 2018 when that change to the ordinance was made. And then in 2023, a developer came and had a plan and got his plan through the zoning hearing board, which is what you are referring to as trying to codify. But the ordinance permitted that.
Yes.
And the zoning hearing board interpreted the ordinance. So there was no change. That said, as a planning commission, we are doing a rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which in my belief could include changing the language that is in here and yet not changing that developer's project because he is under the existing ordinance. Is that right? Okay. So I just wanted to lay that out there, that Planning Commission members should, in my belief, be free to make suggestions about any kind of changes to this proposed new revitalization district without fearing that it is being obstructionist to any kind of development. And now I turn to the Planning Commission members to discuss whether you have comments about this and to also ask Troy, perhaps, who was not with us in 2018 when this big community discussion was held, what perhaps the rationale has been to allow this, this building height. So maybe you, if you don't mind, begin with that. How you took the building height in the current ROR and said, it is appropriate, let's maintain it, but not carry it over on the other side of Carlisle. So how did that happen?
I, I think, to put it bluntly, we followed what was already approved by the zoning hearing board through special exception. We, we talked about this a lot. I mean, we had multiple meetings where we talked about building height. We even had, you know, tables that showed the building height in all the districts, how they compared, how they contrasted. This was the only district where we had consternation of, should we make it higher? Meaning that should we abide by that, what was approved? And of course, as one person commented on protecting historic districts, that was all over the conversation. So that was embedded and fused in the discussion throughout. So we were very sensitive to that, for sure. I think some of the logic was, if you are, you know, quite familiar with downtown and the Old Town, the motel, the Gettysburg Hotel, I think is the largest building. I don't think anybody could really discern how was the height determined. But that was the peak. That, that's what determines, like, that's the highest building that we want. That's our skyscraper in Gettysburg. So anything above that starts to potentially erode that streetscape, that kind of historic form and function that's there. But other part of the logic was, and again, aside from what was determined at the zoning hearing board, we kind of looked at it, look, look at it from a clean slate. What's our rationale for doing it? And part of that was, well, maybe the, 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 the logic is, is that if you would truly look at the elevation, like, like the actual elevation from the square or the roundabout down to the train tracks where the ready site is, or now the Gettysburg Station, there is a true elevation district. The question is, what is that height? If, if the building's at 72, is it even with the 48 hotel? We don't know. We, I mean, we even thought about, should we float a balloon like they do for cell towers? So a lot of discussion, not to get into the nitty gritty, went into that. I think what we ultimately decided, and there was also discussion, too, that the need for revitalization is definite because what's the ready site that's been sitting there for a long time, even when I was working on Steinware Avenue back in the early 2000s, it was still in a vacant site. The transit center that finally went in was the most active redevelopment in terms of what's going on. But there's a lot of other properties on the other side of Carlisle Street that needed attention, too, from the committee's standpoint. And I think from economic development, I think there was champions on the committee that said, too, yes, for trying to increase our tax revenues, tax bases, most boroughs, you have to look internally in terms of where is redevelopment supposed to occur? Like in Carlisle, where I live, outside of Carlisle, but working Carlisle a lot, a lot of their former industrial sites that are no longer industrial sites have become mixed-use properties that have become successful projects. So again, there was kind of a logic. Where is Borough of Gettysburg's redevelopment opportunity today and in the future? It was deemed to be the, the, the Gettysburg Station is the catalyst, and then how that could actually start to potentially transform some of the other properties that have maybe seen better days, you know, tired, really not a lot of investment, but a lot of potential for reinvestment in those areas. So again, at the end of the day, the, the final kind of deliberation of the committee was, we are going to hold true and stick with the zoning hearing board's approval of that 72-foot height. Again, it's 48 foot and you can go up to that 72 feet with those exactions, those incentive-based. But every, and that's just east of Carlisle Street. All the revitalization zone properties that John showed on the west side of, we kept it 48 feet. That's the current zoning maximum height. So that's where the committee ended. We ended to say, we're only going, and so you'll see in the use table where it says extended height building, it's only applicable to the east side of Carlisle Street only. And that's where that, that provision of extended height only is limited. Does that help?
Yeah. And just two follow-ups and then I'll be quiet. The first one is about the incentives. I think originally there were four incentives and now there's a fifth.
Correct.
And, and then if I could just.
Yes.
And just the rationale for incentives. If, if these are things that the borough deems as advantages in our zoning, why are they incentives and not, you know, require, why aren't they built in? So just a, a discussion about the use of incentives, if that's a common zoning practice. And then secondly, what is the advantage of putting those additional parcels in the revitalization district if they don't have incentives? What, what's the goal of that, those additional 12 parcels being called revitalization?
The, the first part of incentives is, it's like, if, if we're going to allow you to have more, basically, building height and development is density, right? You can't go horizontal. If you go vertical, you get more density out of a project. There you're for, you may be beginning more ratables or more units or more square footage, whatever that use might be. In this case, mixed-use buildings would be residential units, right on the upper floors, first floors, like that commercial, et cetera. So that, the incentive is, is we're going to allow you to go higher than the 48 feet, then we, as a community, would like something in return for those impacts. So we're giving something. So it's not just a freebie. Yeah, we'll allow you to go up to 72 feet. We'll allow you to go up to 72 feet with the caveats that you give us, integrated parking, green space, green areas, tying that into the inner loop, which you've worked a lot on, made a lot of investment, and also affordable housing, which is a big topic. We call it inclusionary housing, but it's affordable housing, where a certain number of those units in those, in that, in that building should be at below market rate, if you will, to make sure there's an affordable types of equation there. Great question. Why was it not extended to the other parcels? There was arguments for that and there was arguments against it. I think the arguments for doing that was to continue the revitalization. So it's a uniform district across both west side and east sides of Carlisle Street and that a total area. The, the, the cons would have been now we potentially could have had 72-foot high buildings across that entire area. And that's where I think a lot of people, there's a lot of feedback on, they didn't want to extend the heights to begin with. But we were going on the fact that, hey, we're working in a, in a, in a, in an environment where a variance on that project has been approved. So we, I don't want to say acquiesce, but we decided to say, that's where we're going to draw the line. East of Carlisle Street, extended building heights with those incentives. West, it's just going to be limited at 48 feet. Certainly, a developer, an applicant can always come in and request a variance or some type of provision to give relief. They could do that. But we thought if that's what the applicant wants to do, then they should do that on the west side. But we, right now, we've stuck with 48 feet with no extended height building use permitted on that side.
All right. Thanks. So Planning Commission members first, do you have any questions for Mr. Truax or any comments about the revitalization part of the ordinance? I don't mean to keep calling on Sarah Kipp, but Sarah, can you still hear us? Okay, maybe not.
Yes, I am still here.
Okay, good. So any, any reaction?
I can talk to.
Go ahead. Sarah.
All right. So I'm just going to blab since I can't hear you or Troy very well, but I just wanted to give a couple thoughts about the revitalization district. And the first one is just about kind of the organization of the ordinance. I think it's a little bit difficult to, you know, reading when you start on page 44 and it talks about the uses permitted. And it mentions, you know, these are supplemental regulations are contained in Article IV. I think it shouldn't be as difficult as it has been even for me just to figure out what, where Article IV is and what their, you know, maybe also provide a page number, or if it was easier to, you know, figure out, are we talking about Part IV? And what does this chapter mean? So I think that's one thing, that it's easier to reference what the supplemental regulations are. But as far as the revitalization district goes, I, in general, am not in favor of including the extended height section of the ordinance, in part because, to be, you know, I'm, I'm glad that it does only apply to those parcels east of Carlisle Street. But my understanding is that the project that has already started on the Gaysburg Station site would be grandfathered in, because it has been proposed. And my concern is that by the ordinance saying it applies to anything east of Carlisle Street, all it would take would be a simple change to the map or any other parcel east of Carlisle to be added to that district and then therefore eligible for additional height. And I think we want to limit that extended height to the parcels it was initially intended for, which was a specific purpose of having that particular site redeveloped.
Any thoughts on that, John? As you, I mean, the way this is working is that we make comments trying to reach consensus, but it's really the staff who's going to take these comments and fashion them into a revision.
Yeah. So if I'm, I mean, if I'm understanding correctly, Sarah is not in favor of the extended building height provision. Would that be correct or is it the entire revitalization district?
Oh, no, right. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the idea of that district, especially the expansion of the district. We're right. I think our incentives for redevelopment should be applied to the district, but it should not include anything about extended height anywhere.
Yeah, John, if I may, Charles, if I may, I think what was going, you know, right now, we have it that that extended height building, and I'll look to maybe the solicitor to give us some counsel here, too. But I think we could actually specify, like we've already done in the use table, that the extended height building use is only applies to the parcels east of Carlisle Street. And that's the, that's assumed that it's based upon the, the, the map as it's drawn today. And I think Sarah's concern is tomorrow, that area east of Carlisle Street could expand beyond what the intent was. So possibly, the solution might be to just specify that at extended height building use only applies to those parcels. Is that, could we specify that in the ordinance?
That's how I heard her concern. I don't know of a reason you couldn't structure the ordinance that way.
Right. Well, we can just say in the use table, this only applies, that we can get, specify those parcel numbers, not the address of the parcels, but the actual parcel numbers. And the question would be, I don't know what's going to happen in the future if those parcels are going to be consolidated. So that would be something we'd have to consider, you know, maybe some additional language. But I think there's a solution to address Sarah's comment that could be, you know, readily addressed to contain the extended height building use just to those parcels for the Gettysburg Station project. I think that's what she's saying, if I interpret it correctly.
Is Troy interpreting you correctly, Sarah?
Hopefully she can hear me.
Sarah, were you able to hear, hear that?
Hey, I can, I can tell you're saying my name, but I can't really hear much more than that. Sorry.
That's a shame. Okay. I thought that maybe Sarah, let's play who's interpreting Sarah Kipp correctly. But I thought that maybe you were hinting that, which is, which is my feeling, that the proposed development that you mentioned, Troy, the thing that got through the zoning hearing board, does not actually take full advantage of the height in the ordinance. And that, given that it doesn't, is there an opportunity here to right-size the height maximum in that district?
So if I interpret, John's point was it was an additional 12 feet for the mechanicals.
Yes.
Above 72 feet, right? So is that what you're coming at, Chairman Strauss?
Yes.
So is your, is that where you're coming from? I'm trying to remember, understand, like, the, the differentials between what was put in the draft versus what was approved? Is that, is that the differential, that 12 feet in addition to the 72 feet?
Actually, it would be the 12 feet beyond the 48 feet to 60 feet.
60 feet.
Not the 72 plus mechanicals. This is a tough conversation.
And this is a draft. So again, that's why I would, you know, recommend, if, if, I don't mean to put back on the solicitor, but, you know, you can, you can recommend to counsel what your recommendation is in the ordinance. So if this, and correct me, solicitor, if you advise otherwise, but in my opinion, you could, you could acknowledge what the variance is, but a draft ordinance, you could, you could specify or recommend that it only be limited to 60 feet. We, we debated that, too, in the committee. I mean, we went round and round, just like you guys are starting to go round and round on this. And we, we landed back to say, what's, what has been approved? What's been adjudicated through the, to the zoning hearing board, a quasi judicial body? It was, you know, it, it, was it appealed? I don't know if it was appealed by counsel. Wasn't appealed by counsel. So that's, we went back and said, you know what? That's the letter of the law. That's what we're going to use after defining, kind of measure, measuring stick, literally, of how high we're going to go and how we're going to put that in.
But you would agree that the ordinance change was in 2018 and the zoning hearing board had to do its, had to conduct its business in relation to that. They wouldn't have the ability to not permit something that was provided for in the ordinance, which was 72 feet. So.
Yeah, they, at the time, they were interpreting what that ordinance was, was, and again, I wasn't there. So I'm going off of what I've been educated about and what I've read about. Again, this is a draft proposal. My only concern is, and I know you made that in your opening comments, I, I just don't want to give you advice that's going to, you know, and that might put you in legal jeopardy down the road. I don't want to do that and I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to say that at all because I'm, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. So that's why I would ask your solicitor to say, hey, where, where, where should you make a recommendation on this? And I think there's really kind of a legal opinion that should be given on, on this particular part.
So Adam, you could go and then Jenny has a comment.
Okay. Now that I have a microphone. Yeah. So as I say many times, you know, you are a recommending body. You, you do have approval authority for certain things and usually in Adams County for land development matters. And to my knowledge, you're the only municipality in the county that does that. But in this context, the rezoning is ultimately going to be decided by Borough Council, period, full stop. You know, the, the public obviously is providing commentary and input as to what they feel that the ordinance should look like. And that's going to continue. that the ordinance should look like, and that's going to continue and has continued throughout this process. In regards to this zoning hearing board decision from slightly over a year ago, they were acting under what the ordinance was at that time. You know, that had been amended. And in 2023, they granted certain variances and certain special exceptions relative to that ordinance. Your task now is to decide whether the new ordinance is going to continue that or going to go in a somewhat different direction, not just for that property, obviously, but for the entire borough. So I don't want to say it's a decided matter, you know, relative to the former ready site, but that's had its day in court, so to speak, in this quasi judicial body that is the zoning hearing board.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't want to be interpreted as trying to undermine the zoning hearing board. I'm more speaking about the ordinance amendment from 2018 and what our responsibility is related to that. And you're saying that we do have the freedom to amend this, to make our recommendation as we see fit?
Sure, sure. I mean, yeah, they, they've gotten the approval that they needed relative to what does the zoning ordinance provide for that property. What you do is not going to impact that.
Thank you.
And if I may add, solicitor, that's, that, I think also too, that was the effective ordinance under which, so their approval was under the effective ordinance at the time. So even if you change the ordinance by a recommendation and adopt the new ordinance that may, for just conversation's sake, say it's 60 feet, it does not impact the ruling that the zoning hearing board gave on that project, that application, correct, solicitor?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you read the MPC, when there's changes in a zoning ordinance within a certain period of time, you know, if land development applications have been approved and things have moved forward, there's a safe harbor period, essentially. I don't see that you're, I mean, barring some dramatic slowdown in the development of that property, I don't think that's going to come into play for this.
Okay.
So, no, you, you should not feel like you're being constrained in what you can do relative to the zoning of that property because they've already gotten what they need out of the zoning ordinance by virtue of the zoning hearing board last year.
Thanks. Jenny?
Right, just given all this discussion, I want to go on record saying that I do support what the staff recommends, which is to proceed with the revitalization as it is proposed. And that's my position as one of the members.
Thank you. Do others have, yeah, Chad?
I want to get an opportunity to, to try to interpret what Sarah was saying earlier with not understanding the, the ordinance. Because I too, and I can share my comments, this is a logistics thing. The important thing is the discussion you guys are having over the building height, but there is something to be said, I believe what she was saying is, if you look at page 45 of the ordinance, it, it says to go to Part 4 for this building height. We could add a page number specifically to take you to the page that we're talking about. It's, as I said, page 92. But also, and you really need to go to Part 3, which is where the table is, to see that it's everything east of Carlisle Street and not west of Carlisle Street. So it's just one little typo thing that we can clean up and make it a little bit cleaner.
Yeah, and if I could add too, keep in mind, I believe the intent by the borough would be, this would be codified. So once it's codified, it, the navigation becomes so much easier. Again, it's, it's a large document, a lot of text, and you're trying to go through a paper document. When it's codified, all those links are made. It's not as easy in a Word document to do that, but the codification will make it so much easier. I've seen these exact ordinance, as I've written elsewhere, become codified and it's like, ah, yeah, that's easy. So again, once it's codified, just like your current ordinance, it's electronic, it's there, it's searchable, Part 4, Part 3 are all links, and that could, that could be made possible. So comments on that? Yeah, I think we'll work on that, but I think it's also will be addressed through the codification process.
Thanks. So I hate to call on anyone, but do John and Marty have any comments on this part of the ordinance?
I would support our, Troy and John's recommendations for current building height as presented.
John?
I agree with the recommendations and the consensus that we developed back in, I think, 2018 about the building heights. I think that Troy was talking about the building heights of the Gettysburg Hotel, which is now our highest building in the downtown, but that was, as reported at that time, 60 feet, I think, in the front, front space of the hotel. But because of the slope of the building lot, it was 70 feet at the rear portion of the hotel. And at the consensus about raising it to 72 feet in the ROR district for rezoning, it was, thought that 72 feet would actually not be as high relative to the Hotel Gettysburg as it would have been, and that the extra 12 feet was just for the mechanicals of a And I think that that was a reasonable solution to providing for an incentive along with what we came up with or individual ideas about how they could ameliorate the height restriction. And I, I have, basically, I'm in favor of the rezoning suggestion, and I think that that's where we are now.
Okay. So I want to ask the solicitor, we have not been taking votes on our recommendations. We've been trying to reach consensus, but when there's disagreement, I imagine that to get an answer, we do need to have some process to resolve this so we can actually make a recommendation. And before you do, I remain in disagreement with my colleagues up here in that I have not seen anything to change my mind that back in 2018, that was the correct move to make to permit 72 feet plus 12 feet for mechanicals. So sadly, I, I have to disagree that I believe that that district is appropriate for that amount of height. I'm much more comfortable with 48 plus 12 equals 60. But I realize that I'm just this one person now. I don't know what Sarah, unfortunately, is thinking, and we're also absent Nick Redman. But Adam, what should we do regarding this as we get to our recommendation?
What to do? What to do? So, I mean, ultimately, I assume you're going to be recommending that the Borough Council approves some version of this ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's not a right or wrong way to do this, but I think if you slice it too thin and you go, you know, use by use, district by district, block by block, what have you, you're not going to accomplish anything. It seems to me what you've been doing these last couple of months has been working out fairly well in that you're talking about it, you're reaching some sort of informal understanding that you're then relaying to staff either directly or they're hearing through these conversations, and then they're amending the ordinance. And what I would envision is at the end of this, you're going to make a motion, do we recommend this version of the ordinance or not? I don't think you want to do, I mean, you can do test votes throughout this process to see what you, you think, but you seem to be reaching consensus or not reaching consensus fairly well, just through organic discussions. I don't think you want to break it into, do we recommend this zone as it stands right now?
That's great, okay. So at this point, I would invite anyone in the audience to ask questions of the individuals here who know more things than, than I do about this. If there is a question about revitalization district and building heights, now would be a time to do that, within reason, given that we have a limited amount of time. Dave, can you, can you go up there just so that everyone hears you?
Just for clarification, on the previous zoning in 2018, what provided, what provides the standing for the applicant for that area?
It's provided in the ordinance.
No, well, the question is what did they submit to obtain that? Project-specific?
I can't speak to that, I wasn't doing this then.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out, is what was, what was promoted or submitted for the zoning in 2018 and subsequent in 2023? How do they have standing under that currently?
We, so we have a, from the decision, the applicant's proposed development plan for the property was provided, including the-
Great question.
Transit center, the-
It was, it was the proposed plan, but the land development was never submitted formally for approval.
Yeah, we, we do not have a land development-
How do you do, how do you provide an application for zoning when you don't have a plan submitted? I've done a number of projects over 40 years and I always have to submit my plan before I go to zoning.
I guess on that one, I would just say that that's the zoning hearing board and we weren't, we, we did have a sort of a standing in that, but-
So what I'm saying, Charles, is, is it's theory. So they have standing based on theory, not reality.
My assumption would be that in 2023, when they, they, the developers submitted something, they submitted an application that described it in sufficient detail that it was accepted by the borough, that then-
But with no plan?
Well, I, I don't know what was submitted because I wasn't, I'm not the-
But we, but this planning commission did make a recommendation based on that application. So if you look at our minutes, you can see that application, but no, no plan.
And no plan, so nothing was ever submitted to actually view in reality, just theory. That's, I just want to know a yes or no.
Let me wait, so, so there, there was some plans, of course, I'm not a member of-
But they won't submit for formal approval.
Right, there's, there's not been a land development plan. And I understand what Dave's saying, sometimes it helps if there is a full land development plan, but it's very standard, I would say, for someone to get a zoning approval before they submit a land development plan. To go through the whole land development plan process takes years, hundreds of thousands of dollars. A developer isn't going to get into that process if they don't, if they know they can't use the property for what they want to use it for. So 90% of the time that I've seen, and I've been doing municipal engineering in, in Adams County for 20 years, more than 90% of the time, there's a zoning plan that is provided. It's not a full land development plan, it's a zoning plan that's provided. They did submit a zoning plan, I've seen a two-dimensional plan, they had renderings of these proposed buildings, the renderings were provided to the planning commission, we've all seen the renderings, we've all seen a two-dimensional plan of this, and that's what the zoning hearing board made their decision on. So it was a, so to be clear, there was a plan, it just wasn't a full-blown land development plan.
Okay, so, but what they submitted is what was based on the approval, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that takes care of that one. Number two, Troy.
Yes, sir.
Before you started the process, did you delineate all properties in each zoning district with what their application and use was?
Yeah, we, actually, we did that. We, we took a comprehensive review, Dave, of all the properties, and we started with a blank sheet of paper. So we took the zoning map that you currently have enacted, set it aside, and we went back and looked at it organically in terms of form and function, what existed there today, and we dissected that. And in fact, where we drew the lines changed a number of times through the committee's process because there was inputs that we got from public, there was inputs that we got from you, because I know Jill Sellers talked to you about Elm Street. So we invited input throughout the entire process. And I would say where those lines are today with additional input, even heard tonight, we're definitely taking consideration of how those lines were changed. But we, we devised the zoning districts based upon what exists there today in terms of form, function, and use.
Okay, so, I'll target where I'm currently located, on West Middle Street, and then parallel-
Well, Dave, if I could interrupt, you're getting to the next item. Do you want to do this now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, because I can't find a dashboard of identifying and delineating each property. Does that exist on a, on a PDF or something?
Our work was based upon what we did in the map. So you took the form and function, those form sheets of how we evaluated those, that was interpreted there. And then we have the, the background mapping where we literally looked at each district and then we proposed the information. So it's reflected on the map, Dave.
Can you put up the proposed map for me, please?
Yeah. Inconsistencies are just amazing. So, I'm right here, P Street, okay? It's R2. Now, I have debated this issue for 40 years. There were three different of these things, never successful. But forget about my property, even though it's kind of consistent with some other applications that are R2, that should be NC1. Office Building, Memorial Dents, Bank, The Dietry, The Dietry across the street. You go down here, you have the Apple Center, you have Cadori Memorial, you have a church. So this area has all that integrated business, which is the definition of NC1, with duplexes, single-family, multifamily. You can appear where you have the smaller section of NC1 and demographically this as equal to this. Why isn't this zone the same as that?
Part of that discussion, Dave, was that the committee wanted to limit, recognizing that possibly that they considered that we might be creating some non-conforming uses going forward. So recognizing that, hey, they can be legally non-conforming, but they wanted to limit the expansion of those existing businesses in the future. So that was one consideration in terms of where the, the business-centric of the, of the borough, keeping that tied to the Old Town, the Downtown, and then where on Middle Street, where CS Davidson is, for example, NC1. We went back and forth a couple times on that very discussion of whether it should be NC1 or not. And then the committee decided, hey, we'll make it NC1, but we're going to limit where that is, where that boundary down to, Brecken, what's, Breckenridge Street was the southern part of it. So Dave, we had multiple discussions, even onto the point of what you're saying, we had multiple discussions. So it wasn't like we ignored or didn't acknowledge where mixed uses are, just like you're differing with our recommendation as a, as a collective committee, we're still going to evaluate that and can still evaluate it with this body.
Your NC1 is more applicable to this area and to Hanover Street than you currently have. So you either go by your definitions or you get rid of your definitions. So you want to go by your definitions, then stand by your definitions.
Fair enough, yep.
R2 is defined differently than what this shows and that shows. The NC1 is more applicable to this and to that. You have people in here that are operating businesses that have been in operation for 70, 80 years, and you zone them R2 when you have the opportunity to change what they should be. It's use and application, just like you said.
And I would submit to the planning commission, they have to decide if they want those businesses to continue as legally conforming uses under that zoning district, meaning that we'd have to change it to what Mr. Seitz is saying to NC2, or, NC1 rather, thank you, or what the committee discussed, we're okay with allowing them to continue but as non-conforming uses because we did not want to see the expansion of businesses further. That, that was the logic, Dave.
It's already there, there is no expansion. You're not going to-
Yeah, I, no, expansion in terms of an expansion of a, of a non-conforming use can only be expanded by a certain, it, correct. That, that's correct, that's correct.
A 32-inch belt around a 40-inch base.
Okay.
Okay, that's what you're doing, the people. Cadori Memorial, longtime friends and clients, okay? They're not here, I'm not, they're not supposed to do this. They shouldn't be, R2. Church is, is good anywhere you can have. So down here, you have Tony Strickland's building, you have Hagerman, you have a number of other things that have been there forever. You're restricting them. They're not going to expand anymore, they can't expand because of the salvo, because of land development ordinance, because they don't conform to today's ordinance of stormwater, et cetera, all of us. So it would change, it wouldn't change their footprint on I O. But because of your ordinance, you're restricting them for future, their future bound.
And that's a fair, Dave, that's a fair argument. I'm not arguing with that at all. I'm just giving you the, the discussion that we had at the committee of-
My, my opinion is that needs to be resolved.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Fair point.
Thank you for that exchange on the R2, which is item three here, which the planning commission has not discussed this yet, just so you know, Troy, we haven't actually addressed this yet.
We're jumping ahead, right?
I mean, but not even at all, but we have received comments from you, and I believe they're all-
they're also referenced in Mrs. Siperle's comments and maybe some others. But if we could go back to the revitalization conversation, is there anyone else who wants to ask a question about building heights in, in the R District? Okay, then, John, I don't know if you can interpret this, but I, it seems to me that you can interpret it as, there were three people up here who had one suggestion and I have a different, and maybe we could find out at our next meeting what Nick and Sarah think as we move to consensus, but I'm not sure there's a, a move to change anything at this point.
I, I would agree.
Okay, all right. So let's move to item number three, which is a lot of what Mr. Seitz said, and, and keeping, I, I have to be attentive to time, we have four more of these to go through, so John, could you talk about item three?
Yeah, so, looking at the zoning map process and changes, we've had quite a number of requests for individual parcels and for large-scale changes to the map. We've already gone over the work group method, but overall, the emphasis on the mapping, on the ordinances, was to create additional housing opportunities. When we're saying business expansion, the underlying economics of a business land use, it becomes such that you cannot put residential into some of these structures because the values just do not make sense, the use does not make sense. So we're trying to use zoning to encourage more housing, that's, that's where we've come up, come to this point. Looking at the requested ones for the property owners, most, these are going to be individual parcels. One Hundred York Street, this was a property that we went over quite a few times in the work group. The front of the structure looks historic, the rear of the building is an old garage, one-story, it is not. We couldn't necessarily get to a point where we had this working for everyone's benefit, so what we ended up with was this property being zoned R2. The property owner is currently in the process of developing a hotel, so they're, they're seeking some clarification of, if it could be Old Town. The 328 West Middle Street, that's the Four Square Church, they've indicated that being R2 will be problematic for future development, given valuation of residential, build environment there, you have a huge church as opposed to something that's more readily converted into residential. One Hanover Street, this one, it's a Richards Barber Shop, this is a very small parcel, it's also, it's surrounded by R2, it's currently R2. The problem with this one is that the owner has had challenges finding tenants. The R2 District encourages some commercial opportunities, however, there is a special exception process for most of those commercial opportunities. The building is designed as a commercial enterprise and has historically been used as such, and they would like to maintain that. And then finally, 657 Red Patch Avenue, that's a parcel that we're recommending to be rezoned to R1A. The community around this property and the property owner would like it to remain R1, the reason being is that there is some fear with regards to R1A, the ability to have vacation rentals, bed and breakfasts. The reason it was changed, the parcel's technically in the delineation of the National Battlefield Military Park, I got that wrong, but anyway, those have been requested. We've had map-
Hey, could you just go back real quick? Did you say to remain, it says on there, remain R1, but did you just say-
It, we've proposed it to be R1A, so they would like it to remain R1.
But you're not making a comment on that yet.
Well, I can make a comment on these three right now, so with regards to York Street and Hanover Street, those two, we utilized, with making these district changes, we're looking for not only just parcel boundaries, but looking at our street system, natural contours that would enable light development to naturally be constrained, compounded together. One Hundred York Street, I mean, it's a corner parcel, the impetus of commercial expansion, you'd have potential for map amendments from those neighboring parcels to also be Old Town. Same thing with Hanover Street. The built environment for those properties, warrants R2 per staff. The West Middle Street, we'll probably have a nice talk about that here shortly, and 657 Red Patch, that makes sense, keeping it as R1, there, as there is no real change, with the exception of those vacation rental uses, which everyone in the neighborhood does not seem to be in favor of. We will be, so what, what staff will be doing, we will update the map for 657. Additionally, we can update the map for 100 York and 1 Hanover if desired, I mean, it's something I would recommend instead, keeping it as a discussion point, when we get to the finalization of the ordinance draft, then we'd make either a formal decision or keep the map as is and vote on it as, as is. The big, the big challenge that's come from the community, and this is something that Mr. Seitz was explaining, with the downzoning. Numerous parcels in the borough allow for quite a mix of uses, but the, the complexity of those uses has, has shown up that it pushes residential out. What we were trying to do is maintain those areas that were R2 as R2. The R2 District isn't a, I guess, a conservation district, you're allowed to do quite a bit of residential housing types in that district, so the properties would still have value, it's not, I wouldn't say it's a direct taking, but it does result in changes to the value of these properties. Looking at the properties, Miss Siperle had identified some on Steinware Avenue, those can easily be changed to civic institutional, those are ones that are either owned by the Park Service or anticipated to be owned by the Park Service. North Third Street, North Fourth Street, these are the properties that are zoned industrial, Miss Siperle brought to our attention. When we, as a group, were looking at those properties, the reason those were identified as being changed from general commercial to industrial was the location of the rail access. There, the ability to develop them into industrial properties will be challenging, some of them are kind of industrial already, but otherwise, if it, if it's acceptable to the planning commission, we can revert that area back to general commercial. And then finally, the, when talking about the West Middle Street properties and Elm Street, so, let me bring up the map again. So currently, we have, the Old Town District expands further into this pink area, and we have the Elm Street overlay. The Elm Street overlay limits the uses that are currently permitted in that area. What the working group tried to do was make it so that we don't have overlays, because that, that creates a problem with this mapping and being able to visually inspect what a parcel zoning would be. And in doing so, making sure that those properties would be best matched to either keeping a residential use or having some form of, not, I wouldn't, I would say, mixed use. I mean, there is the, the church property, you have these larger parcels here that Mr. Seitz was discussing. It's something that, we, we provide the justification of why, why we're presenting this, but I guess, what does the, the planning commission, in terms of these areas that are kind of residential, not really commercial, but they do have some commercial buildings, how, how should we treat those? How would, how would you like to see them treated?
Okay, I think this is what I was referencing about competing goods, and so, Troy, this is why we, why you're here. So I, I heard Mr. Whitmore say that the, one of the assumptions behind this rezoning was to protect and grow residential. So what motivated that? There's a, a regional comprehensive plan, is there data in there? Could you provide the rationale, even with maybe some data, about how much residential should be protected and grown and where?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was, it was data-driven, it was more about experience and what, I know John's predecessor, Carley, experienced in the administration of the current ordinance, there's just a, and it's happening, I mean, you can go to the data part of it, if I can go back to that, you can go to the data part, it's not just here in Gettysburg Borough, affordable housing is just a national conversation. If you've, don't understand it, it, it's one where it's on the news all the time, you can go to the National Association of Home Builders, it's the fact that, you know, where do you find housing that you can actually, you don't have to spend more than thirty percent of your income on, you're spending double that on trying to just to afford rent. So that was a big part of, of the conversation. The other part of it was, is that, you know, accessory dwelling units, meaning those additional how, units in terms of above garages or rear types of properties, also seasonal homes or seasonal rentals, has been infiltrating the borough, where it's actually taking, you know, homes that might have been apartments or other types of affordable units in the borough, and actually is then bought up by an entity that then serves them up to transient populations that don't live here full-time, don't pay taxes. I think the other part of it was too, is that Gettysburg Borough, as a borough, trying to preserve as much housing because of the demand for housing, in light of what you have surrounding, as, on the surrounding townships, Strabane, Cumberland, et cetera, where other growth might be occurring, that could accommodate commercial and other types of industrial uses. The, the logic and the thought process was to try to preserve as much of the residential part of the borough as we can today, but also where we have opportunity, and I know the one person made a comment on North College Street, the committee did also go back and forth on, should it be, in terms of ROR, what should we make that? So again, the, the comments are fair on that, because the committee also had those same types of, I say deliberations and discussions, they really did. So what you see on the map is what ultimately was derived at of where the R2, where the residential, and to Mr. Seitz's point, I know we talked about those existing commercial uses that were in those areas. I think the concern from the committee, and again, the planning commission can differ, and that's where this stands right now, was trying to contain commercial types of uses within existing residential types of buildings. If you look at the building on the outside, it's a two-story house, but within there, C.S. Davidson exists, but the outside character of the building, that was what's important too, is what, you aren't trying to also, to the point that this gentleman made was historic protection, that was also part of the discussion about form and function. You know, having, you know, I'll just use C.S. Davidson again, if you drive by there and didn't see C.S. Davidson's sign, you probably wouldn't realize that that was a commercial use, but exists, does well within, and the nature of Gettysburg, like all communities, you had a mixture of uses from the beginning, professional offices, banks, corner grocery stores. So what we really tried to think about was the residential integrity as, as a basis surrounding the borough, and again, your Old Town is your downtown commercial district, spinning off of the Old Town are where you had, that's kind of that second layer of businesses or residential units that also accommodate some type of commercial use, and then beyond that is where that true kind of residential ring starts to, 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 to be formed. And the idea was, we wanted to really try to contain where those existing businesses exist and where they exist now, we're okay with them, allowing them to exist, but going forward, we really tried to preserve and make sure that residential types of environment prevailed.
Okay, two, two follow-ups, and then I'd like to see what the commission members think, and then the public. The first, I appreciate what you're saying, the outer ring on this part of West Middle, though, includes structures that are clearly, they clearly look like commercial, the Seitz Realty Office, the bank, and then that gateway out.
Yeah, that's out, going out to the, beyond the seminary, right?
Right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, now, you're outside the borough at that point, right?
Well, but even, even before you get there, on the, if you're going out on the right side of the road.
Correct, I, I know where you mean, though, and that's, that's, that's a fair statement, Chairman, that, that's a fair reflection, and again, that's, that's part of the struggle that we had, and admittedly, there might be a parcel here and there that like, yeah, we should have did, maybe like the, the monument parcel, you know, maybe that's commercial, but the commercial we looked at was auto-oriented in terms of the, is it CVS or Rite Aid? Which one do you have in the borough, the, the drugstore?
Rite Aid.
Rite Aid, so, you know, it's more of an auto, people are driving in from the, the outside area, so we looked at it as an audio-oriented type of, instead of walkability pedestrian, but you could make the arguments for several parcels along there that might be more commercial, might be NC2, that's a fair, and that's really, that's where we struggled too, as a committee in terms of deliberated, but again, I think there's, in terms of my recommendation, you could, you could literally make an argument for or against, depending on if you want to make residential the predominant use in that area and preserve residential as it exists today, or are you fine with actually having zoning? Because it might go back to Sarah's comment, you change this one to an NC2 or this one to a commercial, where does that start to, where's the next request come in to start changing additional parcels? And all of a sudden, that entire west end of the borough has changed totally. So that, that's, that was part of the fear, I will use Sarah's point, if you start making these changes on a parcel-by-parcel basis to, to more of a commercial, then you are probably going to get that corridor then to turn into a commercial strip over time.
Okay, I, I appreciate that.
That is really important to think about, because then all of a sudden, you've got from Strabane through, you know, you know, thirty-four into, or thirty into Downtown, and then further out, you could have a totally different-looking corridor tomorrow as you would today.
So we'll see what others think about that, I'd, I'd like that to be revisited to some degree, given all the attention that has been on that gateway out of the borough with potential new development on the seminary property and over to where the Y is, but I don't, I don't know what others think on that. I, I, I think I would make an argument to be careful about it, like you said, but also to recognize some of the ways that those structures exist there and what they look like, at least on that one side of the road. But my second one is to elevate Miss Siperle's comment about the R2 and B&Bs. How did that come about, that if we're protecting residences, that kind of development is, is now permitted in the R2?
So if, if John looks at to the left, there is a district that's specifically for bed and breakfast, John, what do we call that, the brown hatch to the left there on the west end, if you can go to the, to the, to the legend? The larger homes that are really-
Oh, yeah, this is the, R1A.
Yeah, R1A, so that one, for example, just to start there, Chairman Strauss's, that one-
Preservation?
Preservation residential.
Preservation residential, thank you. That is really where those uses are, B&Bs, if you will, larger estate types of homes. The, the idea was then to, where the R2 existed, there are potential where you have, you know, a, a bed and breakfast that exists within some of those R2 areas. So the logic was, okay, B&Bs existing in an R2, and the R2 does have kind of, and where you have that kind of a, a potential crossover, where you've got businesses next door and the next parcel is purely residential, so it, it, it is a, it's a, I don't say gray area, but it's one that the committee moved lines from, you know, an NC2 to an R2 a couple times because of that varied discussion. And what you might end up having is that if you are looking at on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we were also making sure that, hey, we just don't want to, I'll use the term, single out one parcel because it's commercial when everything around it is purely residential, because then we might get into verging on what's called spot zoning, you'd have to look at it on a case-by-case, but you know, like, singling out an individual parcel by itself, totally irrespective of everything around it that might be different, so it, it, it can be tough. So we tried to look at where we zone, we tried to look at the blocks of how the overall form and function of a block existed, recognizing that there might be some individual parcels in there that actually have commercial activity, both what we wanted to see today, but also what we were cautioning about moving forward in terms of, hey, if- in terms of, hey, if we make this commercial today versus residential, then it potentially could have an impact on the overall character of that block or corridor in that part of the neighborhood.
Well, again, I think if the, one of the missions here is to protect residential, there's been a lot of discussion so far in our meetings about the R1, and now we're getting the R2. And I believe that bed and breakfast should be taken out of the R2, given what we were discussing here about protecting neighborhoods and residences. But I'd like to turn it over to Planning Commission to either pick up on either of those two comments or any other questions you have for Troy or John about the zoning map and where it exists right now.
Can we review what uses are allowed in R2?
John, do you have the used table there?
I do, one moment.
You mean currently? Or proposed?
Currently and proposed. So for residential uses in the R2, every type of residential use can be accommodated. A special exception is required for sober living facilities, student housing dwelling, and manufactured home community. In terms of lodging uses, you have bed and breakfast, motel with special exception, and temporary shelter facility with special exception. The difference between a vacation rental and a bed and breakfast is that the bed and breakfast has, is operated by someone on site. So it does have a different type of use than what would be like an Airbnb or VRBO. Typically, the vacation rental uses, that's what's really troubling in the borough as a, that's what I get the calls whenever a house comes up for sale, hey, can I do Airbnb here? So that's something we were trying to avoid. Looking at civic and institutional uses, I'll make sure I'm on the right spot. The government facilities by special exception, and then places of worship and police fire EMS by right. Foresteries, you have to have forestry allowed per the MPC. R2 also allows for public recreational facilities. When it comes to commercial uses, you're not going to find too many. Special exception for office uses. And there's small wireless communications in public right-of-way. There are no industrial uses permitted in the R2. And accessory dwelling units are permitted as our childcare centers. R2 also allows for home occupations, no-impact home-based businesses with special exception, which is required per code. And finally, temporary outdoor events by special exception. Currently...
While you're looking for that, also this morning, Sue Ciprilli gave us a, kind of a comparison of the existing and proposed in the R2 that I find helpful, but perhaps not everyone's had a chance to look at it because we just got it through this morning. I realize, thank you for sending it.
Looking at the current R2, in terms of residential uses, the student housing is not permitted, the group care housing is not permitted, special exception required for conversion apartments and mobile home parks. One of the things we looked at as a group, if we're allowing apartment conversions, it makes a whole lot of sense to allow for apartments as the same type, because especially in this situation, you'd have a situation where you could have historic structure demolished to make way for apartments. So we wanted to make sure that the historic integrity of buildings were being, we encourage preservation in that regard. Let's see what else. You have the two-family dwelling unit care for a relative. The special exception, you're allowed to have a bed and breakfast use. Service stations are permitted, essential services with special exception, you could have a healthcare staff housing. Municipal buildings with special exception, once again, no-impact home business. Park playground, that's a public outdoor recreation. As see, places of worship. This would be a change to allow them places of worship by right as opposed to special exception as current. Primary and secondary schools are permitted, professional business offices, a special exception, that would not change, schools permitted, and then that's it.
So is there much change there that you see?
What we tried to do, I would say, is to increase the, some of the more residential-themed uses, the assembly uses associated with neighborhoods, so like allowing places of There, that change for bed and breakfast, I mean, that's something we could easily revert back to a special exception to keep it in context with current code, or if desired, remove it.
So I would like to remove it. What do others think? Bed and breakfast in the R2.
That's fine with me, with removing it.
Sarah? Okay, the three in the room have arrived at that, but yet again, that's where we are in the room, so...
Sorry, are you talking about removing bed and breakfast from R2?
Correct.
I'll go with the group there, and that sounds like the majority are in favor of removing.
Okay, and...
Can I just clarify that I am a member, that I don't vote when we're not voting, but I am part of the membership?
Of course, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, it's just a couple times I've been excluded and...
Oh, I really didn't mean to do that.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Sure, please. Do you have a comment on this, on the B&B?
No, I'm happy to go with the consensus.
Okay, so I will note that to make sure that I do that, I apologize. I wanted to read the definition of the R2 that might help as we move beyond this, but now I'm losing my page again. What page? Thirty-one? All right, so the purpose of the R2, I don't know if you want to pull that up, is that the purpose of the R2 district is to provide for the development of certain areas of the borough into residential neighborhoods that contain a mix of attached two-family and detached residential dwellings, and create walkable access to goods and services in the downtown and other destination areas within the borough, if that's helpful at all, as you consider any of these other uses that are in the chart. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this item related to the zoning map and any changes to the zoning map? Please, could you go over there and remind us of your name and address?
Sharon Michaels, and I'm at 120 York Street. I have to say, after listening to this discussion, I'm kind of more confused than ever, so hopefully I can get that straightened out. But I am in that block of York between Stratton and the Sunoco that is moving, being proposed to be moved from Old Town to NC1. I have kind of the opposite experience from what Dave Seitz had relayed in that the character of that neighborhood is mostly a neighborhood. We do have neighborhood businesses, it's always been mixed use, but what I am hearing is that, and what I see in the list of uses, both by right and by exception, is that that would be really, be encouraged to be more commercial. So it seems like they're changing, they're like flip-flopping almost. In particular, the neighborhood, I think, has a concern about that building at 100 because if a hotel were to be built there, it would really change the character of the back yards of those houses that would, that it would look down on, onto. And I couldn't help but notice that Eddie Plank is over there on the wall, and that, of course, was the building that he's most associated with in Gettysburg. And I think if you look back, John, that you will find that that back part of the building was part of the historic building, and it was the showroom initially and then the garage. So it's not like you have just the historic part of the building on the front. It's also a difficult building because there's no parking attached to it anywhere. So, you know, in terms of how, it almost looks to me like the NC1 areas are on the, are where the flow of traffic is coming into town on the main arteries, and then the R2 is set back from that, like on Middle Street. And do we want the corridors that come into town to reflect, you know, a really different look from the downtown? I would, my answer to that would be no. I have the youngest house on the street, I think, on our block, the block I'm talking about, and it's 100 years old. The others are all older than that. And maybe they aren't all in the best of shape, but I think there are other remedies for that than to create a situation where they possibly are raised in order to put more modern buildings that are more appropriate for commercial there. So that's my thoughts.
Could you just restate your name and address so that we have it?
Sharon Michaels, I'm at 120 York Street.
Thank you. And Troy, it sounds like that kind of comment was what was fueling your decisions related to different parts of the map.
Yeah, because I don't know if John can pull up the zoning, if John can pull up the zoning map, I think to Sharon's point, and I know she was here at the open house too, so on either end of coming into the borough, you'll see that, coming in on York Street and on, I call it 30 West, Beaufort Avenue, you know, you can see that there's kind of a, those are your gateways coming in. So we really recognize that as being, that's the, if I can read the map correctly, neighborhood commercial NC3, and then coming in off of that, where Sharon's talking about is where we transition it to that NC2, because there was, you know, I think Sharon, your building, I think, NC1 rather, but your building, I think, when we talked about, it's residential, but you wanted the option to have commercial in there, correct? Correct. And that's exactly what, one of the things that we took your comment back from the open house and said, hey, we've got property owners like, I'll use your first name, I'm sorry, like Sharon and your husband that were there, you've got buildings that may be fully residential, but you bought it with the understanding that it was allowed some type of, you know, professional office or some low-impact commercial use in it. So again, that's exactly what helped drive the discussion of where NC1 and those types of uses were placed on that map. And that, and, right, and I think that that's where, the beauty of that table, if I may, is that the planning commission through this process can easily make changes on individual uses, and you can see comprehensively how that table relates, those uses relate to all other districts. So where you want individual uses provided for by zoning district, that table's, and it's a simple matter, if the planning commission recommends, let's take out hotel from that, then that would be a recommendation to make it a blank cell, and that would be a non-permitted use in that particular district. So again, that's the process of trying to get to a consensus on what should be and shouldn't be. Because we, if I could be, the committee, we literally took several meetings, and we went use by use on that table, and I think we almost took the same type of consensus type of vote. What do we want to see? Which districts is this use permitted, not permitted, et cetera? So we did the same thing in the committee, and again, it's, I think, the same process that the planning commission is now evaluating too. So it's not easy. Yeah, and... And I would agree, I mean, I do this all the time, and under municipalities' planning code, under zoning, you have to provide for every conceivable use. So... Every, if you, if you don't have joint zoning with a neighboring, excuse me, joint zoning with like Strabane or Cumberland, each individual municipal zoning ordinance like Gettysburg Borough, you have got, you must provide for every possible use conceivable. And if you don't, yeah, yeah.
If I could interrupt, just to move this forward, your point is very well-taken about the uses. And if I could just suggest that we are still, seems to me, from this meeting, in the gathering of input.
Sure.
You've mentioned several times about the deliberation of your committee, and we are appreciating that, but I think the public is still responding to some of these things and this use chart in particular. And so though we tried to move methodically through it, it quickly becomes not very methodical as we respond to these comments. So John, I think we might need to revisit a lot of the R2, or some of the R2, because we haven't moved through this chart that well. There's still comments related to the dwelling for student housing that may be someone who appreciate. These other questions, I'm just suggesting maybe to the group that we move forward here, there are some items in R1 to revisit, and then now R2 to revisit. But what do others think? Or first, what do you think, John, and then see what the commission thinks?
Well, I mean, it sounded like, from what I understood, clearly bed and breakfast, that that's not going to work. In going, looking at the purpose statement, do you, does the commission want these higher-density residential uses to be permitted in the R2 district? Or should they be more restricted or just completely eliminated and only permitted in some of the mixed-use or commercial areas?
Do planning commissioners have comment on that? And some of them are the dwelling, student housing, and some other items that I think we must continue to talk about, but Jenny, do you have any, or Marty, related to the R2?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Marty?
I'm wondering if we have any current examples of higher density that might be existing non-conformant? Can anybody think of any?
Oh, that's a good question. Troy, do you know that?
Explain, I'm sorry, Marty, can you explain that again?
Do we have any existing non-conformants in terms of higher density within the R2?
I'd have to literally go back, I don't want to give you the answer, I'd have to literally go back and look based upon the uses that are there on the chart and evaluate where there might be some existing uses that, based upon that, would be non-conforming uses going forward. I think that's your question, right, Marty?
Correct, that would help inform my decision as to whether we want to pursue higher density.
Yeah, so I think, John, what we could do is just evaluate that column, and maybe through a highlight of, you know, it's currently permitted, currently not permitted, and this is how it's reflected there, that would give you the kind of color coding or some symbology that would tell you how that relates back to the current zoning ordinance and what's permitted.
John or Sarah on the R2, the density question, and some of these specific uses that have been raised in the last 20 minutes? Okay, does anyone in the public want to continue to comment on the zoning map process related to R1 or R2? I think those have been the hotspots. We haven't talked as much about commercial, but I'm not sure there's anyone in here to address that, but would anyone like a question at this moment? Right, I'm sorry. Yep, so we took those for sure. Anyone else? Yeah, please. Could you go over there, just so everyone can hear? Please, thank you. Please, thank you.
Suzanne Cassiel, and I live on 131 South Washington Street, near the Arts Council Building. What hasn't been discussed much is the low-density NC one district, low-impact, low-density, because our zoning was changed. When the house was purchased years ago, we were in the old-town district. Now, we're going to be in a different district than what we purchased the property in. So my question is, if you're in this low-impact, what does he mean by low-impact exactly?
Troy, could you?
Yeah, so the idea there is that businesses like professional offices, like an engineering firm like C.S. Davidson, a law firm, those that have, you know, you're not, it's not a Rite Aid or a CVS or a large, you know, type of commercial activity where you're bringing in a lot of cars, a lot of outside residents. You could walk up to these businesses or conduct business over the phone or through the internet to hire C.S. Davidson or conduct your law office. So low-impact really goes down to making sure that there's no increased traffic or to a, to a, to a degree, no increased traffic impact on that existing neighborhood as opposed to where you have the commercial zoning districts where you have more automobile-oriented trips being made to go to the drugstore, for example, or go to the hospital, et cetera. Does that help answer the question in terms?
Well, to some extent, yes, it does.
But that's, that's the logic of low, low impact.
We always had residential in that old zoning anyway. But in other words, if I would want to rent part of the house to a business. You're saying it's okay, as long as it wouldn't be like constant traffic coming through?
Right. If you, if you, like this, say that you know where C.S. Davidson's office is, like an engineering firm or a law firm or a dentist office or something like that, something that's more lower-impact where you've got a walk-up business plus maybe you have a parking lot out back that actually accommodates the parking requirements for that use. But yeah, that's the logic that you've got, because, you know, your, your, your property can only accommodate so much commercial square footage right now, correct? Like if you were going to rent out a part of your building, there's only so much.
Well, our building has always been totally business and commercial on the entire first floor.
Got it.
The second floor is residential where we live.
Right, so you're.
So if I wanted to rent that first floor to someone who wanted to have a business.
Correct. A clothing store.
A thrift shop would be okay?
Thrift shop, exactly, exactly. That's what the NC one allows you to do, because the businesses that are going to go into that first-floor space are going to be those that are going to be sized to actually say, yeah, I can make a business case. I could have a business plan for a thrift shop or what have you that's going to survive, and I can get a bank loan that's going to actually allow me to fit and furnish that business and give me the operating capital for that business. You're not going to have a CVS drugstore try to go into that first-floor commercial space.
Well, there won't be enough square footage anywhere.
Correct, that's exactly, that's what, the point I'm trying to make. The business going in there is going to be low-impact because it's going to be right-sized based upon the existing square footage that it's allowed to operate or the, the space within which it's allowed to operate. So you're, I think you're exactly right. You're helping answer the question. Low-impact is meaning those businesses that would normally and typically be allowed to go into a first-floor mixed-use building with residential on the second floors, if you will, upper stories.
Well, currently.
Correct.
Currently, we use the first floor for our business.
Right.
But I'm just saying, if I would ever need to rent it to somebody, it's not fixed up for living space.
Correct.
It's just fixed as, it's a business.
Yep, you could continue. And I think, John, the, you say you're in the low-impact zoning district, right?
Yeah, they made it like.
NC one, right?
NC one. And we're like close to the arts, I mean, it's already a mixed neighborhood.
Correct, you, that's the purpose, yeah.
In other words, we have a bed and breakfast where the owner's present, we have a.
Right, yep.
The Arts Council, which is like all the time, activities and events and, I mean, they have one, it's a business, so they're, they're running a business there.
That was the purpose of the NC one, is to, to recognize that you've got a mix of residential and business operations like you're talking about.
It's always been that way, yes.
We're trying to, we're trying to preserve and strengthen and keep the integrity of what exists there today going forward tomorrow. So you're, that's the purpose. What you have zoned today, what you have permitted today, we're trying to continue that going forward with that NC dash one zoning district.
So that would not prevent anybody even buying the property from renting, living in the first, second floor and renting out the first floor for a business.
You are correct, you are correct. So it promotes those mix of uses just like that. First-floor commercial, upper floors residential.
Yeah, because that's great, that's the way the neighborhood always has been, and it's, but, I mean, the Arts Council's pretty heavy duty, but, I mean.
Okay, so, so I know you've been to several meetings on this, and maybe, John, if you could have a word here about, this has been resolved, do you believe, based on what the discussion is? I mean, and you, I think you've been dealing with this particular part, we've received comment on this parcel before.
Well, yeah, so with this area specifically, we had Elm Street overlay, we have parcels that are previously old-town OT. It gets into that maintaining some form of residential, because there would be with multiple commercial opportunities, there'd be more of an opportunity for, well, there'd be more of a pressure to have the structure go to completely commercial. And that's what the NC one is trying to maintain, the current, I guess, the, the current uses, but also the current neighborhood conditions.
So what you're saying is you, you maintain it. In other words, say I wanted to sell that property.
Yeah.
Yes.
But somebody wanted to use the whole two stories for their business. That would not be permitted?
It, it would be permitted if it's permitted. If the, the business opportu, if the business is allowed in the use table, then that would be permitted.
Does that make sense?
But, but the ability to utilize the, you would, you would have fewer business uses that would be able to utilize your property, yes.
So right now, we have bed and breakfast in our neighborhood, I mean, where the people live and take good care of the properties. I'm not, you know, I don't have any complaint. But you're saying someone could not buy it to put a bed and breakfast there if they wanted to?
Bed and breakfast is permitted, is a permitted use in NC one.
Yeah, so any of the uses on the table, like the commercial types of uses that you're speaking of, ma'am, if you look at under NC one, those types of commercial, bed and breakfast, for example, would be like a lodging use. And if you go further down, John.
There's bed and breakfasts permitted.
You go down to the, beyond that, then you down some of the commercial uses, yeah, retail. You'll start to see where, you know, certain uses are permitted in that NC one. Again, it's meant to be, you know, lower-impact, just like you're talking about, you know, smaller square-footage types of commercial uses in those, you know, traditionally multi-story buildings that have, you know, a mixture of residential and commercial in them.
Well, that, that's what it is now. But the whole building itself is, both floors are like 2,500 square feet. So you're not talking a major-sized building that would have a drugstore or whatever in it. But if someone wanted that whole property for a business, if I wanted to sell it, they could do that.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Just getting a little clarification there, because if I want to sell it, I don't want to be stuck with a property nobody wants to buy, you know?
Right, thank you. Maybe one, time for one more on this topic, on zoning map process and changes, either on the residential or commercial.
I'm TJ Patel, 606 York Street, Gettysburg. In the last meeting, I also questioned about the same question I'm asking, it's not changes. So in a commercial district, right now is a tourist commercial, allow the conversion apartments and the rooming to be allowed into just zoning. And Mr. Truck says we talking about all about the residential, the low, low, low-income, not but affordable residential, then why not in a commercial zoning, allow to convert the, any building into the apartment? Because that's a bring what you guys looking for, and the sum of the district is already a commercial and you guys putting into the residential. So the, and you said, you have to put every kind of a business in all township. So once you put every kind of business in a general commercial and take it out from the residential, that's make easy, because all residential doesn't want any kind of business, like a pawn, pawn car, plow, plow, pawn business and like that. You can put everything into the general commercial, allow everything into the general commercial. Why we wasting a time on putting everything everywhere, putting everything commercial in one corner? Allow apartment, apartment should be a commercial item, because it's leaving more than one people, it should be allowing general commercial also. Why not allowed? And I asked the question in last meeting, I don't see any changes, why it's not done?
It's the next slide.
Okay, so maybe we'll move as residential land uses, the item four, could you wait for one second to get that response?
Sure.
But let me clarify, are you also asking, should there be residential in commercial?
I'm, I'm talking in a commercial, there is, should be a pa, a la, conversion, conversion apartment and a studio apartment should be allowed into the zoning, which is you guys take it off. That should be, right now, if you look at it, a general commercial, tourist date, and they allow in a both tourist commercial and general commercial. You take it off that part.
Okay.
So, John, if you could bring up the use table, if we just can just, I think we can address this pretty quickly and easily. John, just bring up the current, yeah, the proposed, go up to general commercial by the residential uses, and you'll see there dwelling multifamily apartment, it's permitted by right in the C one general commercial. And I think what Mr. Patel is talking about is multifamily conversion is not permitted. Is that correct, Mr. Patel? It's a blank cell, meaning it's not permitted. So that would be what the planning, I think what he's asking the planning commission to consider, should you have that, just like apartments, as permitted by right in C one, should you have the multifamily conversion dwelling in there? The, again, the conversion part of it is you're taking an existing residential dwelling.
It is not only residential, any commercial building can be converted into apartments.
Yeah, by def.
And doing that, that commercial building have a more value, because there is more competition to, as she have, just a minute ago, she was asking, I don't want stuck with the property as limited use. When we, we put the millions of dollar to convert, came to the borrow, we didn't think you guys going to cut it off and chop it off the thing. We, we, has to, our value has to be come back, because right now, value is not coming back. If, if we have a, like this, people say, oh, we cannot do anything.
Sure. So, so if I could add, John, I believed that at a former meeting, we did discuss multifamily apartment in the C one.
Yes.
And is that reflected on there?
So multifamily dwelling is, multifamily conversion isn't, because it's, multifamily conversion is defined as an existing single-family detached dwelling that has been converted or shall be converted to individual dwellings. The use, the situation that's been described, you would, it would, the use, land use would be multifamily dwelling. So this conversion aspect wouldn't apply to it. I mean, we can, we can put it in, it's just it's already covered.
Yeah, so if you're converting a commercial building to an apartment, it's, the definition of a multifamily conversion, the definition in the draft ordinance is it's an existing single-family detached dwelling. What Mr. Patel is saying, if he wants to convert a commercial building to apartments, it's permitted by right in the draft ordinance under apartment building. It's not a conversion, it's not, don't confuse the term conversion and apply it to a commercial building. By definition, it's a single-family detached dwelling that's being converted into apartments. So he, he and his, you know, investors can continue to take a commercial building by right and convert it to an apartment building in the C one district.
I remain a little confused by that, and I'm sorry, I apologize for that confusion.
So by conversion, it means by definition, and this is typical, a, a conversion meaning that you're converting a single-family dwelling to a multifamily apartment building, just like they would use some of the larger single-family dwellings that were large estate homes in the borough. Which one burned down here unfortunately earlier?
Carlisle.
Correct. Historically, that was probably a single-family detached dwelling, correct? Or, okay, but the logic is there was apartments put in there. So you're converting, just take any single-family detached dwelling that might be a large building that right now, there's, it's easier converted to apartments, where you have all the bedrooms, now individual apartments. That's a multifamily conversion. It's just by definition, Chairman.
But in the chart, I'm just wanting to make sure, don't we need to have by right in C one to accommodate this dwelling multifamily apartment?
It's, it should be, it's already, it's already.
Oh, it was updated, okay. That was an update we made at a recent meeting, and I just didn't see it there, but I guess it was, okay.
So, taking a commercial building and putting apartments, it's on the draft, you can do that.
Okay.
You can do that.
They doesn't say about the conversion.
But again, conversion is only associated with a, a single-family detached dwelling, not a commercial building.
Yeah, in a, a commercial.
Not a commercial building. So don't take the word conversion and apply it to a commercial, converting a commercial building to an apartment. It only applies to a single-family detached dwelling by definition.
And allowing the multifamily apartment, it's be, it's be allowed by the U.
Yes.
Correct, and I think that's, it's permitted by right.
And that was a change we made after a previous meeting on the C one, along with, as well as Farmers Market and a few other items that I imagine are updated. Let's move to residential land uses, knowing that there are still some items on the table related to the zoning map. But what about residential land uses in addition to what we just described? Do you have a slide on that?
Well, so we did have some community comments specifically coming out of the meetings. The big one gets into the definition of family as it relates to single-family, the R one Of concern, currently it's no more than four unrelated individuals. What that reality, in reality means is that we're having individuals who, for economics, are forming a household in a single-family dwelling, but they aren't a household, it's just four people independent of each other, and they're not operating in a similar manner as a traditional household. So there are legitimate concerns, especially when you're thinking fire protection, making sure everyone clears an emergency situation, that it's not going to have the same interaction as a traditional family. What staff is proposing at this time after hearing from the community is that we would have no more than two unrelated individuals may occupy a single-family house, something to that effect, so that instead of four unrelated, it's two unrelated. For accessory dwelling units, the comments we received specifically was that accessory dwelling units in the R one should not be permitted under any circumstance. Increasing the incentives for that height in the revitalization district, that came up, I think I discussed that earlier. Additionally, limiting height in all districts to 48 feet. No multifamily in the R one. So currently, that multifi, that apartment conversion can happen in the R one district. That's the, the reasoning that it is in the ordinance draft was for these larger historic structures that the, the families of like 12 and 11 kids, that's not necessarily happening anymore, but there is still these structures that we want to make sure we preserve. anymore, but there is still these structures that we want to make sure we preserve. So having some kind of use in them, it makes sense to have them in as a residential, either apartments or duplex, some kind of residential use. And then the additional housing opportunities in the general commercial and industrial districts. With that, it would be ensuring that all of the multifamily types are permitted in the general commercial and allowing for those types of condos and other multifamily in the industrial district. That, the industrial district, while I'm a little, I could, I, I could caution planning commission to, to think about that one because industrial land uses and residential land uses generally don't mix. The benefit though, to having residential development in those industrial districts is you have larger structures that can be converted into some pretty unique housing opportunities.
Okay, and this is a big one, this is, these are the kinds of comments that've come up the most at our town hall and our other session, would you agree with that?
Yes.
And are these staff recommendations or is this just capturing what the residents have said?
A little bit of both. For the family definition, that, that's coming from staff because it's, the, what I've heard is that there's been fear with regards to the number of unrelated individuals. I've worked in jurisdictions where we've had standard at two, it's as low as you can go, I believe. I, I can see the benefit, that's, so that's why staff is recommending it.
And then for everyone's information, accessory dwelling unit, I've gotten a lot of comments on what that means and that's on page 133, I won't read it because it's quite long, but the staff recommendation is also to eliminate that from the R1?
Well, I preferred SE, but I mean, even that was not recommended from the-
You prefer special exception.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, as it currently stands, most of our R1 single family dwelling stock is going to be traditional, what would people think of as suburbia? It is single family dwellings, one, two stories, larger lots. Would it change the complexion of the, character of these neighborhoods to have accessory dwelling units? Most likely it wouldn't. However, you will have increased traffic, you will have increased, there'll be more people on the block, so it, it will change things. So that's why I'm, I'm going to punt and then give it to the planning commission.
Troy, when you listen to that, can you provide any help before we turn it over?
Yeah, this is a big topic. I mean, I, again, the, the reason why ADUs, accessory dwelling units were permitted in the R1 was to increase housing opportunities in the borough. I think that was a, a very strong stance that the committee had and took. Accessory units could be someone has a detached garage that has an, a loft in the top and they converted it into, maybe a son or daughter came home from school, didn't have a job, and now you have a place for them to live. And that's the big issue. You've got family members that it's too costly go, to go into a nursing home, it's, there's a number, I've got family members, I've got my oldest son that's graduated from college, works full-time, has a professional job, still can't afford an apartment. So he's living at home. So he's living in a bedroom, but if we, he would like to have his own place, he would like to have his own space. That's the, that's the, that's the driver of ADUs. It's, it's the fact that it's giving, you know, family members an opportunity to have son or daughter or an, a family member that needs assisted care and you cannot afford the thousands of dollars a month to put them into an assisted living home. That's what the ADUs are helping to drive. Now, where it becomes maybe a, a problem is where you extend it out to non-family members of using those ADUs. You're renting it out and now you're creating, you know, again, that's a policy decision that really has to be made by, or recommendation by the planning commission, but there's a lot of, in, in, in the light of the current economics of housing, there's a lot of proponents. AARP has done a, published a paper on this very subject in promoting ADUs. I know I worked in Martinsburg, West Virginia, and they promoted ADUs for this very reason. Affordability of housing is crazy. So where you can actually have these types of facilities increases the opportunity for housing, either for family or non-family members, depending on how you construct the policy.
Okay, and what about on that topic of family? Is there a way to restrict this to related members like an in-law, a child?
Yeah.
Or what about an in-home care person?
Yeah, you can, so if you, you can write it up that, I'd have to go back and look the way we wrote it here for the borough, but you can write it specifically that an accessory dwelling unit is limited to a family member. And you can use the definition of how you define family in the ordinance, it's by blood, marriage, et cetera, you can limit that. And then the person that's actually has an accessory dwelling unit, it becomes an administrative item where to say, hey, I've got, I've gotta go out and check that apartment to make sure that it's a, it meets the definition of family, because over time, that family member deceases or the, the son or daughter finally gets an opportunity to buy a home or apartment and moves out, then who's going to replace the space? It might be a non-family member and the borough has to enforce that to say, nope, that's not permitted. So then the property owner that's used that ADU now say, hey, I've got an opportunity to have income and you're not allowing me to do it. That's the policy issue. So its impact on a lower density residential neighborhood, it's the opportunity that you've given that family member to have an ADU for a family member by blood, or it's an opportunity to actually say, hey, I can generate income. So it, it really comes down to how do you construct the requirements for an ADU?
I think this is generating some interest in the audience, but first, does anyone up here, I want to ask a question or make a comment related to this?
I have, just to supplement what Mr. Truax was saying, very often with these ADUs, there's an agreement that's actually recorded on the land records in the courthouse that says this property is allowing accessory dwelling unit because we have, you know, parent, child, sibling, whatever, and at such time as this is no longer occupied by two related people, it's gotta go. And, and that's your enforcement mechanism, so that any prospective buyer of the property coming on looks at that and says, oh, if the borough finds out, which they should, then we're going to be in trouble and we have to deal with it.
And you're already using the language of two, but it's currently four. Two unrelated-
Two by two.
All right, so are there any questions or comments about this? State your name and address.
Darren Glass, 29 East Middle Street. I just want to say that this whole concept of the definition of family is really, really troubling me and has been for weeks. This country does not have a great history when the government gets involved in defining family and in this day and age, when so much of our society is trying to think more flexibly about what families are and what family means, I'm quite frankly horrified at the idea that the borough would adopt a more restrictive definition of family. I certainly am sympathetic to and understand the fears about large groups of unrelated college students or the like, and let's be frank, this is really about that. But I have serious concerns about how this definition of two unrelated families would affect foster parents, couples who choose to not get married or legally are not allowed to, which has been the case in this country up until very recently, and all matters of other families of choice. Quite frankly, I think that the idea of defining this, this two unrelated individuals thing is homophobic and transphobic and problematic for our society. I would be really, really offended if this got offended and this is coming as a single father who might want to choose to cohabitate with someone else someday without getting married and would not be legally allowed to. And foster families, not allowed to. International students, we just had the wonderful heritage festival, it's not clear to me, but I think if a, if an international student comes, a study, exchange student would come to live for a year, my reading would be they would not be allowed to under this definition legally. So I'm really troubled by this and would encourage people to think that, about this more flexibly, because two unrelated individuals is extraordinarily limiting in this day and age.
And if, I think if it, have you looked at the current draft? I know there was a recommendation there of what, I wanted, if you look at the current draft of what it says in the-
I, I have not, I saw, I read the draft from a month or two ago, so.
Just for the planning commission's consideration, that's what's, you know, one consideration of the two. If I may, can I read the current one?
Please do, please do. If I'm misreading something, I'd be very happy.
Yeah, just throwing, because I think, I think, to your point was what was contemplated of the traditional family has, takes on different meanings today than it did-
Yes.
-years ago. So a household consisting of one or more persons related by genetics, adoption or marriage, or a group of four or fewer persons who are not related by genetics, adoption or marriage, and none of whom are wards of the court unless such wards are related by genetics, et cetera. So I think the idea is it gives, I mean, you have to limit the size, it can't be 20 people in terms, but I think that it gives more flexibility.
But if we're saying changing that four to a two is my concern.
Yeah, it was, yeah, so it's changing the four, I think that's where you're coming from. It's four, non-related, non-married, et cetera, and then that's-
Four seems reasonable to me, two is not.
And that, that was my only point, I'm not saying what's right or wrong, I'm just saying the altern, the alternative to what you're suggesting is in the current draft.
Right, so I think he's-
That's only for the planning commission, so there's, you can choose two, or you can look at the current draft where it says four, and I think that's getting to this person's point, there's more flexibility in the current draft. So just for your information.
And we are approaching 9:30, which is the expectation when we would conclude, and yet this conversation is very lively. Are you trying to jump in here, Adam?
I, I was just seeking clarification on this for, for the benefit of myself and perhaps for others. Let's say that my wife and I have a kid and we want to have, you know, foster child. That's, would be permitted, correct? Because there's her two, have a family unit and an unrelated person. That's two, it's four people in the home, but it's two unrelated family groups.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, I-
And similarly, if, if I was living with my girlfriend, I've moved past that, but if I was living with my girlfriend, that'd be two unrelated people, that would be permitted, but, but her friend could not move in, we could not have-
It says four or fewer persons.
Okay.
So you've had yourself, now your wife, but then your girlfriend and her roommate from, you know, college or whatever, just make an assumption, so there's three, so it would be, and they're not rela-, you know, you haven't gotten married yet, none of buddies related, that would be a family unit, under this current draft definition.
But four persons, if it was me, a significant other who is unmarried and each had a child, that's four persons, so that would not be-
But there-
Your child's-
But it's four unrelated, that, that is not how this reads. I, if that, if this is changed to reflect that, but that is, if this was changed, if we just changed the number four to two, that is not how this reads.
Before the, discussing the number, could you just one last time say what, regardless, forget the number, what is a family as you just described those different items?
Say that again, Charles, I'm trying to-
I would be better if I could have tabs on my draft here, but when you said adopted, foster-
Oh, yeah, I'll read it again.
Read those, please.
Yeah, read again, yeah, sorry. So a household consisting of one or more persons related by genetics, adoption or marriage, or a group of four or fewer persons who are not related by genetics, adoption or marriage. It goes on, but that's the, the gist of it. So the caveat is you got, you got between one and, you have to have at least one, myself, I'm a household, I'm a single individual, right? I'm a, I'm a household. Or I could have up to four that are not related at all, et cetera, that could be a household, a family. That's, that's what it's, I think the, and that's what the gentleman's, the person's getting at.
But his concern is about two.
Yeah, the two, I think is coming down, because that's been a, John, the two is kind of a traditional number.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, if you look at most zoning ordinances that have been written today, they, that never been updated in the last at least five years or so, they're gonna usually say, have that magic number of two. Because it's, again, the, the, and I, I've grappled with this with other ordinances of how the committee or solicitors even have actually said, no, this is how it's, family is defined today. So this, this definition here is more of the, you know, what I've found to be the more current, acceptable, based upon the dynamics of what we call family today.
Okay, any other comment on this? We are not going to decide this.
No, I doubt it.
We're not going to make a recommendation on this one today. I, I know, John, you were quoted in the paper, I think, which might have gotten this about the, or quoted maybe, in any event, you, you've made the staff recommendation, we've heard one comment, are there other comments related to either that specific residential land use or any other residential land use, item? Nothing on ADU or family at this point?
I have a question without popping up there.
Correct, if you had a, each apartment, you could have a family, depending on the size and bedrooms, how many people could live in that, right? But, yeah, each, each, each household unit is almost like a residential dwelling unit, if you would say.
It costs a terrible amount of money.
Yeah, yeah. And, and not to belabor, but, you know, I've had, you know, stakeholders like yourselves argue that I'm a veteran from the Iraq war, my family are my PTSD, you know, members that I, that's my family. I have no family, but, but, you know, you know Sergeant so-and-so and Colonel so-and-so, they are, we, we fought together, we bled together, that is my family. That's, that's the argument that people making, that it's, it's, we're not married, we're not related, but by golly, that's my family because I have no other family. That's the argument that people make and I, that's pretty, as a veteran, I, I can appreciate that one. So I, that's why I say that, you know, the, the traditional definition of family has evolved because of our circumstances today. And whether you agree or disagree, I think it comes down to, it's, it's not the way that we traditionally have viewed family in terms of mom and dad and, you know, son and daughter, and that's the family unit. Now it's, a lot of things have come in to kind of redefine family. And I've dealt with this in many other municipalities of the same discussion. Yeah, it's a great question, but it's one that, to, to the chairman's point, I don't think you'll solve in tonight's conversation.
But also, Troy, could you, so taking Mr. Glass's comment about striving for an inclusive approach to our community, but also knowing that we have items in here that are specific to student dwellings, is there a way, and I worry that this is going to sound discriminatory towards students, and I don't mean it to be that, but we do delineate what a student dwelling is. Is there a way to do a family, non-student dwelling as, as, as a part of this?
Go ahead, John, go ahead.
A student is not a protected class, a family would be.
So can we spend a little more time on this, this particular definition related to what you just said? And Adam, I don't, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
You don't want sorority brothers and sisters to come in and say, we're a family unit, right?
No, we don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then let's move to any additional zoning ordinances. I had one, I'm sorry that Mr. Pule laughed, but I did want to give John a chance or Troy to say anything in relation to his comment about group homes.
Oh, yes. This is one, Mr. Mopright, I wanted to bring, I guess I just wanted to ask the solicitor on this one. We have sober living facilities teased out in the draft ordinance. Group homes, sober living facility, should those be either one use? Should that, because if we're treating, if, should we be treating those two uses separately? That's what I'm getting at.
To be honest, I think that's a policy decision. I, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of anything that would affect that legally. I think if you want to break them out, you could. If, if there's a law out there that would limit it, you know, limit your options on that, I'm not aware of it, but I think you could differentiate them. Speaking purely for myself, it seems like they're rather similar in character, but if you would want to separate them, I think you probably could, I can look into that, if you would like.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the, the logic is group home is a, it's protected under the Fair Housing Act. You've got to allow, it'd be someone that has a disability, a mental, you know, impairment, and you have, they're living in a group home, et cetera. It is a, I'll use the term protected class, it's a fair housing protected class, unlike a sober living facility is someone that's actually recovering from, et cetera, but yeah, group-
But they are a protected class because they do, they are qualified just having a disability by the nature of having an addiction.
Yeah, right.
So they-
I mean, now recommendation-
Under law are a protected class, so.
If, if it's okay with the planning commission, staff would like to combine them because they do, they, the instances that they're over, they overlap- they do, they, the instances that they're, the overlap seems pretty clear.
Yes.
Mike, do you want to go over there?
I'm Mike Malawiki. Just a, just a quick clarification. I have nothing, I have no problems with group homes. It's always a case of numbers. So is a group home 20? Is a group home 10? Is a group home five? So, and, and can we limit it? Just because you can have a group home-
Yeah, but Mike, yeah, no, Mike, yeah, there's, in the, in the draft ordinance, there's a clear definition for group home, sober living facility, all these uses are defined, and any one of these would have to be licensed by the Commonwealth. So again, according to our definition, there's no more, a group home cannot have no more than 10 persons. So the limit's 10.
So, I hate to use this term, but you have a pseudo fraternity.
It's not a group-
They wouldn't be licensed by the Commonwealth.
It's not a licensed group home facility. It has to meet the definition of a group home facility in the definition, it's licensed.
So the license would be by the num, for example, by the number of bedrooms, by the number of staff, correct?
Yeah, can I read the definition? It's in the draft. So a group home, community residence, comma, group home, a residential facility also termed, referred to as a community living arrangement, licensed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that provides a home for not more than 10 persons with a disability as defined by the Fair Housing Amendments Act, and it cites the U.S. Code, or elderly individuals excluding staff who don't reside on the property, who live, cook, live and cook together as a single housekeeping unit. So that, that's, that's the definition. So it's definitely not, there, right there, it's not a fraternity or sorority.
So it's, it's not more than 10. So we can't change that definition to say we want the number to be a lower number.
I'd have to go back and just, because I'm, I'm going on what the state permit and what the regulations, and I, I'll just double check to make sure.
Well, I'm just thinking of a group home on Ridge Avenue, typical R1 street, 10 people would be a lot of people.
If, if the building could accommodate that many, yeah, that's the key, that's the key. It goes back to the, the lady's comment about, I've got so much square footage. So again, if the facility could accommodate four, it's a group home if it meets the definition, but it's only four.
And, and looking at this, the group home itself becomes a family. It is a family.
And I have no problem with that, but I'm, I'm just saying that someone said earlier, the devil's in the details, I think it was somebody up there. And that's what it is, because then you could see, you could have a fraternity that goes out of existence, or, or some other large-scale entity that happens to be in an R1 district.
I could maybe help. We have not visited Part IV supplemental regulations, which we must, but on page 150, when it says group home, it indicates one, this is your point about parking, one space per two beds plus one space per employee on the largest work shift. That might be a protection regarding what you're describing about overwhelming a neighborhood with parking and, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. The land development aspects assist in that regard.
Yeah, so, I'm not against them, I'm, I just don't want to see something blossom into a problem in a neighborhood just by virtue of the numbers.
But the first point I'm hearing is that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania would not license a group of students to form a group home.
Yeah, they wouldn't meet the, yeah, they wouldn't have the-
But then the second point is really important too, related to even ones that do-
Yeah, you'd have to be a licensed operator. You couldn't have a fraternity come in and apply for a group home license for the Commonwealth. Somebody would really have to be asleep at the wheel on that one.
One thing to keep in mind, I mean, if it's, if it's like a sober living facility, you have to be in treatment to actually be considered a protected class. So just, if it's a regular housing situation, that there is no unique aspect that's creating that special class, that's not going to be permitted. And we'd be able to have justification provided to the court to either, for a zoning enforcement or an injunction to remedy the use.
Yeah, I think the only logic to separate them out, again, by definition, is that group home is the Fair Housing Act. You have to provide for them in every residential, wherever, wherever there's a single family, you allow single-family dwellings, you must allow a group home to occur. You cannot discriminate. A sober living, you could say, nah, we don't want that in an R1. So by having that broken out separately in the table, you can clearly see where each of those individual uses are permitted or not permitted. If you combine them, you're combining them and classifying them as group homes the same as you would be, and you may not want a sober living facility where you're required to have an R1 group home in an R1 district. Does that make sense?
Yes, and currently you separate them out, and I imagine that was for some specific-
That's for the, for the very reasons I just stated.
So is, and you were just requesting to combine them?
I am. I'm concerned that we might have a situation where those individuals as a protected class would still claim, would still be able to meet the definition of a family.
I think Adam Boyer should research this more for October.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Are there additional zoning ordinance questions?
Yeah, I'd go to NC1 if apartments have permitted use there, John, under- Yeah, it would be a special exception. So if you had a single-family dwelling that was all residential, and you bought it and converted it, so if you see their multifamily conversion, it's permitted by, in the NC1, it's permitted by special exception. So the reason by special exception is you're allowing the zoning hearing board in this case to put conditions, reasonable and ordinary conditions, to that converting of a single-family detached dwelling into apartments. You want some conditions like, hey, we got parking concerns in the neighborhood, so that reasonable and ordinary condition. So you just don't want it permitted by flat-out carte blanche. Yep, you can do it by right, and we don't have the ability to have the public weigh in on conditions or the zoning hearing board. In this case, it's a special exception to do that.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah. So you're putting reasonable, ordinary conditions on it through the zoning hearing board process. Yeah, so that's, that's the purpose of special exception in this case, yeah. They'd have to seek the borough, the zoning hearing board's approval to do that.
We have another comment in the back, and maybe this will be the last one related to additional zoning questions. Thank you. Do you want to stand up here if you're?
Scott English, Gettysburg Academy, 6668 West High Street. Why we're on NC1 is event venue, because that's where 6668 West High Street is located, correct?
John? You want to, yeah, point to it.
Yeah, so it's NC1.
NC1. Is event venue a permitted use in the new ordinance? Why not? Took two years to get it, part of Elm Street used by right. Now that I have the planning commission, Mr. Whitmore and Baker Associates, why is my property being stripped of future uses?
And that could have been, I hate to admit, maybe an oversight that we didn't acknowledge that there was a, so I, I can't specifically answer, but that's definitely a comment that should be taken into consideration.
And planning has not discussed that district, right? And we've not really discussed that district, so this is an important part of the-
Well, and I think it also comes to something Mr. Seitz was touching on, and I'd like to touch on, that de-zoning of properties is counterintuitive to increasing your tax base. My taxes went up 30% by going commercial with that property. I think the borough now enjoys that 30% additional tax revenue. I enjoy it, but de-zoning properties and basically excluding future property owners of the same rights that are afforded to those property owners currently, is basically giving the borough a 30% tax reduction in revenue in the future. I mean, I'm just-
Just to be clear, it's currently permitted by right in the zoning district that you're at? I just want to-
Yes, sir.
It is.
Elm Street overlay, the event venue ordinance that was recently adopted last year by the borough, it is permitted by right in the Elm Street overlay.
Okay, and that, just making sure the planning commission is clear, because that could be definitely a recommendation they might want to make, is to change, change that, what it says on the, on the chart right now.
I didn't know if the intent was to, I can use it that way for now as a existing non-conforming, and that future property owners would not have that, but that does not seem fair. That is, other property owners have been talking about that, basically you're devaluing my property. And it seems like it's, you know, I know the planning commission did not recommend that the borough adopt and allow me to do that on that property, but it seems like it's almost a personal vendetta.
I, I have no personal vendetta issue, sir, so I think it might have just been an oversight, and I hate to admit that, but that's, this is exactly why this, this process goes forward with public comment and review to get this comments in. So I think that's a great comment for the planning commission to consider, that if it's permitted by right today, should it be permitted by right in the ordinance? And it would be an R in the NC1 where John's cursor is. So, yeah, great comment.
Thanks. Thanks. So let's now move to the process timeline. I have some thoughts on this, but if you want to-
Disregard the process timeline.
Yes, okay. So what I was thinking, and John, you react to this, first of all, thank you, Mr. Truax, for being here and answering these questions.
Yeah, my pleasure.
We've enjoyed this opportunity, and I know that you were, you know, the facilitator for a year, and now we were able to really ask direct questions. When we left things, we kind of made room for Mr. Truax in this meeting to kind of answer a range of questions, but we left things at the August meeting where we were working through districts. And there are still a few districts, including what Mr. English just suggested. So my suggestion is that we continue reviewing the districts as outlined in the uses in districts Part II and III, and pick up where we left off. And then to look at Part IV, which is the last part that we, we haven't really touched at all. And then finally, to go back to Part I and V, and just be sure that we captured the comments that we made there. I only, I didn't get to finish reading the entire red line, but I believe there might be a few items that we just want to ensure that the red line captured some things that planning commission back in July, or maybe even June, suggested for changing, like the purpose statement in Part I. And, and of course, if we continue down this road about family, that would be definitions. So, John, I know you are really facilitating this expeditiously. I will note that the borough recently moved ahead on the sign ordinance, and how long did that take? So I don't want to replicate that process, of course, but maybe giving ourselves some more time here, especially after tonight's comments, is crucial. That's my opinion. Planning commission members, do we have any reaction to that as we work with staff, in particular John? And then, John, you respond about revisiting these items in the order that I suggested. Benny? Okay, John Whitmore, then what do you think about crafting an agenda that has those items on it in October?
Yeah, so, well, I'm just playing on the timeline now. It makes sense to talk about the NC zones and beginning the conversation on supplemental regulations, having a meeting in November to finalize supplemental and the outstanding issues with Sections I and V, and then we could get to potentially having a planning commission vote at the December meeting. That would put this on track to be voted on by council in February 2025.
All right, so let's write that in chalk or something right now, not permanent marker. If you could hold that just one second, I appreciate that timeline, and I look forward to seeing that on the agenda. And please, everyone know that John is, is really working hard on redlining, meaning, I mean, to making a redline document. Let me take that back. Other connotations to that phrase, I apologize, to making a document that shows the revisions. And we appreciate that, and you'll probably have that up in a couple of weeks, maybe, the latest? Because we did make some, we did move on some things today.
Yes, and there, in going through this document, we, we make changes, we step away from it, we see more stuff, every single time I see more stuff. So we're, for the next couple of weeks, there's going to hopefully be at least one update, but most likely a couple of updates on the website for the drafts. Naturally, if there's-
Can you file on the other website?
I'll put, I'm going to put this presentation on the website. So, and with that, if there's minor text changes that need to be made, misspellings, anything like that, please just email me. I, I go through this document, like I said, if I miss something, I find something, I miss it again. It can be a little cumbersome, I can, I acknowledge that, but we're getting to a point where we're going to have a draft everyone will feel confident and vote it for.
Thank you. Are there additional comments from planning commission members? We'll do public comment in one second. Any additional comments from planning commission members? Or Chad, anything from you? Okay, then we have one final round of public comment. Are there any public comment? Go ahead, Sharon. Please.
Where do we start on the industrial change in general in the whole, sort of industrial? I think this is the most important question in the whole process. It seems like this is kind of out of there somewhere. I also think the process would be forward to the next, I'm sorry.
Well, I believe that it will be part of when we are going back district by district at the beginning of our next agenda. And would you agree, John, you would put that, you would highlight, you said NC, we have some lingering things on R2, and can we look at this too?
Yeah. Well, with the industrial district, I mean, we're talking about these parcels that we've identified. Well, that's super out of our attention, it's these, figuring out NC1 or general, general commercial, which would make the most sense. And staff will bring that to you in November.
Thank you. Does that help with that?
Yeah, this one, I'm going to have to have the proxy through all the other, the other circle of these, from the fire hall down to the, the area that's on the west side. And that would be really useful, second, include all the things that we started.
Can you include that in the discussion?
Yeah, we will, we will do a review of industrial as well.
That'll absolutely be on the agenda for, for the October meeting.
I understand you've not done with R2 yet.
Well, no, no, we're not finished with R2, the way I understand it, yeah. And, and thank you for your comments, I think we'll continue to look at those. We'll get to that in one, right before we adjourn, I'll address that, but we have another public comment.
So the hour is late, I'll make this quick, although it's a little bit complicated. I want to direct my comments to the members of the planning commission and to the one member of Borough Council that is here tonight. There was a discussion earlier about the re-categorization of the station project properties, should for any reason the arrangements with the current developer not proceed. And I don't want any of my comments to be misinterpreted as in any way suggesting that they shouldn't, or that they may be undermined in any way. But, Charles, you asked Mr. Truax about the data that was used to address the issue of affordable housing or enough housing in this process. And, Mr. Truax, you mentioned that it's really a national conversation, and there wasn't any specific data that was used addressing the unique characteristics of Gettysburg. Housing is a very hot topic nationally, but it is also unique to each community. There is a lot happening with housing in the Gettysburg area. common sense to what is going on. I think that there is a lot of data that's out there and available, and we're taking an awful lot of time in this process to get this right. And this is a really important topic, and I think we should be using actual data about Adams County and whether it's the comprehensive plan or census information. I know it's out there, and I I think more attention should be given to this before moving forward with the categorization of that property, should the current project not proceed. There is a very delicate balance to be addressed when you look at the needs for housing in the borough and the unique historical nature of the borough and the economics that are that are part of that. So I would ask the members of the planning commission and then the Borough Council to seriously consider whether or not market rate housing in the congested center of the borough really should be continued, should the current project or allowed or whether it's special exception or otherwise, should the station project not proceed as anticipated. Is that clear? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Okay, I jumped over item seven. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for October 21st, 2024 at 7:00 P.M. And, John, it's going to be in here?
Yes.
I I will admit, this is a little awkward to be speaking into these microphones, and if we also have people on Zoom, I'm not sure now.